Moved by Counselor Peter Angel, seconded by Counselor Maves. Yes, Counselor Morocco.
Your worship, I just wanted to clarify something and I actually had a conversation with Dean in regards to the motion that I put forward. Sorry, I'm just trying to find it here in regards to the integrity commissioner, whether we had to have staff bring us back more detailed on whether it was going to be under retainer or a shared cost. And Dean has informed me that that's basically dealt with at staff level. It doesn't have to be a specific motion.
So it's implied and...
Yeah, that will be part of the staff report, giving those possible options. I know other municipalities have looked at a shared arrangement, so obviously that'll be part of the eventual staff report.
Thank you very much.
You're good with that, Counselor? Okay. Any other comments on the minutes? Seeing none, we'll call a vote. All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. Next up, disclosures of pecuniary interest. Do you have any disclosures tonight? Okay, seeing none, we will move along down to presentations and deputations portion of the agenda. First up, we've got an age-friendly community initiative, and I believe we have some representatives here. Is this, we've got Virginia.
My partner isn't here yet.
Okay. Are you able to...
I haven't started.
Are you good to go? Because if not, we have a second group if you need some time.
Okay.
Well, why don't we... You know what? Why don't we do this? We'll hold off, we'll give you a few minutes, okay? Hopefully your partner will arrive. First off, actually, I think what we're gonna do tonight, we're going to have a special honor, Mr. Jay Cochran, a very famous individual, and I'm gonna ask Counselor Thompson if he would maybe help us to do this introduction and recognition.
Yes, I've met Mr. Cochran before. He's turned out to be a great friend over the past probably fifteen years that he's been coming to the city. And for those who may not recognize the name, he's the tightrope walker, the prince of the air as he's described, and he has walked, tightrope walked here on a wire several times in the past. But this year, he's been here and walked from the top of the Skyline Tower to the top of the Hilton Tower. It was supposed to be about eighty-some-odd days. I think he got seventy in because of weather-related issues, and he has set all kinds of records as a result of the height and also as a result of the distance. I think he's walked approximately twelve miles. I'm sure that he's going to elaborate a little bit further on that. But one of the key elements of every place he goes and every place he walks, he has worked on behalf of children around the world. Certainly each time he's been here, he, in the past, has chosen Tender Wishes as the recipient of donations that he does by signing autographs after every walk. And he is here tonight to make a presentation to Tender Wishes and the Boys and Girls Club from the summer activities and the money he has raised, and he'll speak a little bit, I'm sure, about that further. And I'm sure everybody has read in the local media about the millions of dollars that he has raised in his fifty-one-year career, and certainly building, I believe, a school in China at one point in his life. So, very unique individual, and we're delighted to have him here in the city all summer long. Hopefully, he'll come back again. It's certainly good for all the charity people and children in our community, and I think he has a presentation to make to yourself and to the community along with that. So, if you would like to call him forward.
Sure.
I think that's appropriate.
Mr. Jay Cochran, would you please come closer so we can hear what you have to say? Sure. Now, before you do get started, I will say this. A couple or a few weeks ago at Oaks Park, Counselor Thompson and I were there for Heroes fundraiser where Jay had his tightrope setup, and you know, Vic and I thought, and actually, Counselor Gates was there as well, we thought we'd give it a shot. It didn't look that hard. I mean, you know, we're pretty, pretty good balance, and we thought that we could give it a shot, especially, we had the advantage, we had the big, long balance pole that Mr. Cochran uses. And of course, everyone I talked to says, "Well, that's why it's a lot easier, once you have the pole." And so, we thought we'd give it a shot. Well, let me tell you something, neither I nor Counselor Peter Angel were even able to go one step without someone in front and behind us, and that's with a wire that was straight, with no wind, two feet off the ground. So if you can imagine being six hundred feet in the air with an absolute upward slope with high winds, knowing any mistake would be your last mistake, my level of appreciation and respect has gone up, and I know it has for Counselor Peter Angel too, many levels. Because a real pro makes something look absolutely easy when in fact, it's absolutely incredibly difficult. And I know it looks easy, and we take it for granted, because you did it so many times, and you did it so many places around the world, and beyond impressed is what I have to say, to see how talented you really are. So, Jay, why don't you address us and give us some of your presentation? We're anxious to hear what you have to say.
One of the things that your daddy's talking about, of course, I just received these last night, so I have no chance to do it with him.
Bart?
I shortened to Mr. D today, and Mr. D said, "I want one of these." So, this is the one that you can see here. One here.
Let's see what he's got.
This is the other. That was the Senator Skywalker's. I'm just gonna take that over to the mayor's. We have a little gander at that, and he can try to do it next year. Anyway, I will take a lot of time. I have two things. As you know, ten years ago, it's always been a great, it's always been a great thing for me, and the Boys and Girls Club have always been here, and of course, we call Lori and Al to accept this. I always bring them, the first time I came here, Lori retired, the first time I came here ten years ago, I said to them, "When I come to you, I will bring you a suitcase of money." Gentlemen, here is a suitcase of money. If I may, your honor.
Yes, please.
Fifty years ago, Counselor Thompson called me and said, "I want you to meet an individual who wants to help me with the Tendriss Foundation when I was with them." And I met with Jay, and I thought, "This man is out of his mind." And he said to me that he wants to raise money for the kids that he served, and that eventually, he wanted to expand that. And the next time he came back, he said he expanded. He did. So he's now the Tendriss Foundation president, and he's also managing that back there, and he wants to expand again. When he first, I had his suitcase at home still. There's two of them, and they were full of money in Chinese yen and Russian whatever.
I'm gonna find some more.
And there's probably more in there, so going to the bank, I'll mark it and help you there, because there's a little bit of everything in there. He's really an angel of a man. He's up to the sky, and that's right based for him, because what he does toward the children in our community, and especially the kids around the world, to us is just very, very special. And I know Al and Tendriss and all the Boys and Girls Club and all of our kids that we serve are very, very pleased and honored to have you do this for us, and we are very grateful. I mean, this is just one thing that he does. There's so many things that, I mean, Vic could probably tell you if you knew about. There's a lot of things that Jay won't tell you that I know he does that's very special, that he just, that's Jay Cochran that we know, not Vic's. Put in a wire cable, the little boy who wants to meet Jay Cochran someday, he asks Jay Cochran, "You'll buy him a bicycle?" The little boy who has a bike that speeds up, and he sees it, and says, "He doesn't deserve it, he wants another bike." Helping with wishes that we still don't know about, what happened, and I can't talk about it because of the confidentiality that I know he's had a part of, is just very, very special to us, and we are so grateful that you are here for us and for the kids, we're grateful for what you do, and on behalf of the Boys and Girls Club, Lord and the family of Al and that was the Tendriss Foundation. Thank you so much for what you do, for being a gentleman, for being an ideal citizen, a true Canadian, and I know you live in O'Callaghan, but I know it's only... Thank you, Jay.
I'm glad you're mine, I thank you. Last but not least, I'd like to leave a little something behind. All summer long, you walked me through the floor. Well, I know that you're building museums and things like this, and I've never really left anything behind before. So here, I would like to present to you the costume I wore, the shoes I wore, and the wire I walked. On the shoes are your size, so you're... I thought he'd hurt his kind off the ladder, you know, walking the wire.
Well, you know, Jay, I think maybe if we get a motion from council, I think maybe the most appropriate place for this would be in the Niagara Falls Historical Museum, where we can have a permanent display as the best dressed ambulance the city's ever seen.
I would certainly, and I think that was the objective, to have it go to the museum, so I would make a motion to that effect. Also, I think that, is there any writing on there?
Oh, yes.
I think there's a plaque on there, also indicating... Also, the walks that you made this summer, almost twelve miles, has been entered into, whoops, the record...
Alternative.
Alternative records, Guinness would not do it because it wasn't continuous, and it couldn't be continuous because of the weather, but I would imagine there'll be a plaque that would be coming to go with that, indicating the rule record for distance and height, so that will happen, but I'd make that motion.
We've got a motion by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Morocco. Any discussion to the motion? Seeing none, we'll call a vote. All those in favor? It's unanimous.
Thank you very much.
All right. That's beautiful. Yes, all that degree.
Oh, I see. Okay. Thanks very much.
I wanted to check his luggage.
What's that? Counselor Maves has agreed to carry your luggage from now on?
I've got the money.
That's great. Really, truly, folks, something of a historic moment. It's kind of neat that you happen to be in the chambers when this is taking place. Very exciting time. Niagara Falls, the benefit of one of the wonderful skills that Jay has. So Jay, thanks again, we appreciate you being here. Thank you. All right, we will try the age-friendly community initiative once again. Let's see, do we have our team here for this? So we have Virginia and...
Doug Rappeljay.
Okay, Doug, okay, super.
Thank you very much. Your worship, members of council, staff, members of the gallery and viewers, we certainly appreciate this opportunity to talk to you about the Age Friendly Project. This evening, joining me is Doug Rappeljay. He's a member of the management committee for our project. He's also the chair of the City of Welland Seniors Advisory Committee, and he's the retired director of Senior Services of the Niagara Region. And he has been very instrumental in bringing Age Friendly, the world concept of Age Friendly, Our agenda this evening is very general in nature. What we're gonna talk about is just the rationale for Age Friendly, and then we'll talk about how we're enrolling Age Friendly here in Niagara, and then we'll speak more specifically to the Niagara Falls Age Friendly Initiative. And more specific information was circulated through your clerk regarding Age Friendly. There was a letter from, or a report, a letter and a report from regional council that they have already adopted the principles of Age Friendly, as well as you would have received the year one summary report. And now, I'm just gonna turn it over to Doug.
Mr. Mayor, council, staff, and public, I think how appropriate, what a role model for seniors, in Jay being able to walk over that wire every night, and I can't even get to the third step on my... Niagara has joined a global effort led by the World Health Organization to become an age-friendly community. An age-friendly community is one that enables all citizens, indeed all populations, to live in security, maintain their health, and particularly participate fully in society. The number of older persons sixty-plus worldwide will double from six hundred million to 1.2 billion by two hundred and five, twenty-five. The number of older adults in Canada sixty-five-plus has increased from fourteen point eight percent in 2011, and it will continue to grow until 2031. Soon, there will be more seniors than youth under the age of fifteen. Soon, there will be more people leaving the workforce than entering it, and soon, there will be more deaths than births. Strong increase in the number of births in the twenty years following World War II from 1946 to 1965. Today, three out of ten Canadians are baby boomers or represent 29 percent, and that really started just in 2011. The baby boomers started becoming sixty-five in 2011, and people are living longer due to the significant achievements in public health and improved standards of living. The number of centurions is increasing yearly, and I know through my work career, year after year, in the early days, we celebrated in the homes for the age of the ninetieth birthday. God, that was just so ordinary, that the hundred and over were really a bigger celebration. Making a community age-friendly is deemed one of the most effective policy approaches in planning for the increase of our aging population. Over 500 communities in Canada are engaged in Age Friendly. The City of Welland is the first in Niagara to be recognized by the World Health Organization. And it's interesting, just around 2008, there were thirty-three communities worldwide, four in Canada, that were participating in this project, and now, as I said, there were over 500.
Being engaged in an Age Friendly community initiative has lots of benefits. Obviously, it benefits older adults by providing them the security they need, a community that maintains their health and supports their participation fully in the community. Age Friendly also benefits businesses. If older adults make up a larger proportion of the consumer market, spending 25 million a year, and older adults are loyal customers and outspend younger shoppers, then meeting the needs of older adult consumers makes good sense and increases the bottom line. Age Friendly also benefits voluntary organizations. If client relationships are important, then organizational policies, practices, and behaviors that meet older adults' needs are very important. And if funding is important to voluntary organizations, then Age Friendly is a means to leverage funds, and more and more funding agencies are now supporting older adult initiatives. Age Friendly also benefits all ages. If citizens shovel snow from the sidewalk for improved mobility for seniors, a parent walking their child to school benefits. And if the aim of transit is to give independence for youth, it also benefits seniors. The Niagara Age Friendly Initiative started in 2009, and Doug was very instrumental, as I said, in bringing that whole idea and concept from the world level here to Niagara. They wanted, a group of citizens wanted to build an awareness about the issues and encourage action that respects and values the needs and interests of all populations, with a particular focus on older adults. The partners came together at two levels. We have the City of Welland as the local level, and they brought on Niagara Region to ensure that the project could be enrolled to other communities in Niagara. As well, at the regional level, the Niagara Research and Planning Council became involved. And together, they were able to secure funding from the Ontario Trillium Foundation for the project. One of the first actions the management, project management team did was to appoint a group of individuals with a broad range of interest to a vision committee. And the vision committee, one of their first initiatives was to develop a strategic plan. And their vision is that we have Niagara as a caring community that optimizes opportunities for an enhanced quality of life as people age. As part of the project, we have a resource team, and they come at no cost at all, and we are responsible for facilitating community groups, community consultations, assisting communities in developing an action plan as a result of the community consultations, and working together to promote Age Friendly. We also support an application to join the World Health Organization Age Friendly Movement. Age Friendly, our Age Friendly Project here in Niagara, is based on three main initiatives: the World Health Organization, the Public Health Agency of Canada, and the Murray's Alzheimer's Research and Education Program at Waterloo University. One of the major mechanisms to engage or to find out what the issues are facing older adults in our communities was to do a series of roundtable community conversations in 2011, in the fall of 20, or winter of 2011, and the beginning of 2012. And the results will be used to develop community reports for each of the communities and an action plan. Age Friendly has unfolded in each community in a different way, but for the pilot in year one in Welland, how they went about it was establishing first a seniors advisory committee, and the seniors advisory committee took on the responsibility of conducting an Age Friendly Project. And a needs assessment was carried out, and then from there, they got a community report which identified the actions that were necessary to move Age Friendly forward. And as part of the process, the World Health Organization membership was secured. There's been many who have been involved in the project since it started. We have a lot of businesses, a lot of volunteer agencies, as well as a number of people from the public sector. And here in Niagara Falls, already, there's been a number of agencies involved, the Willoughby Manor, and as we move further into the project, the Niagara Falls Victoria Avenue Library has already agreed to host our next Age Friendly event, and that will be Friday, November 2nd, from nine till 12:00. And any information people want, they can get from H, the email address, hfriendly@niagararegion.ca. And also, we're looking forward to having another Age Friendly planning event at Coronation Plus later on, closer to the end of the year. And now, I'll turn it back to Doug.
Just some facts about Niagara Falls population and how it's aging. In 2006 to 2012, there was a 5.9 percent increase in seniors in Niagara Falls. In 2011, 17.9 percent of the population were seniors. In 2006 to 2011, the population of zero to fourteen decreased by 6.1 percent. And why is this important? This aging population is creating challenges for older adults and their community. For example, available and affordable housing, employment, healthcare, transportation. Niagara Falls, Age Friendly makes good sense. And I should mention that it makes good sense for all of Niagara, because we have one of the oldest populations in Canada here in Niagara. Age Friendly is not an additional project for staff or council. Age Friendly shares the same principles as the Accessibility for Ontarians with Disabilities Act. The official plan, and we've been successful in getting in a number of communities, reference to the Age Friendly unofficial plans and other municipal endeavors. Being Age Friendly enhances the community work already being done, and being Age Friendly optimizes opportunities for enhanced quality of life for people who are aging. Niagara Age Friendly Community Initiative requests that the council of the City of Niagara Falls receives for information the presentation by Virginia and myself, on behalf of the Niagara Age Friendly Initiative, as a follow-up to the reports and information that have been provided to you, that the council receive the one-year Niagara Age Friendly Community Initiative report. Further, that the City of Niagara Falls affirm its commitment to Age Friendly principles, and further, that the City of Niagara Falls staff be encouraged to engage in Age Friendly events, to learn more about Age Friendly and contribute to the process. And further, that the information regarding Age Friendly be forwarded to the City of Niagara Falls Mayor's Disability Advisory Committee and other committees that consider the interest of older adults. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments from council of our presenters? Okay, so they've put a request on, as you can see on the screen right now. Basically, you're asking us to receive your report and that we participate in the principles that you've laid out here tonight. Okay, Counselor Thompson?
You didn't have any reason for picking me? It had nothing to do with age or anything?
No, no, not at all.
It's so nice to see Doug Rappeljay here. I think many years ago, I had the pleasure of sitting on the board at Sunset Haven with him. How many years ago was that, Doug?
More than we want to mention.
Anyway, my pleasure to move the resolution regarding the Niagara Age Friendly Resolution.
It's moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Morocco. Any discussion to the motion? We'll call the motion. All those in favor? It's unanimous.
And Mr. Mayor, if I may just add, if we can be of any assistance to staff or in looking at forming any committees, we're available to assist in any way possible.
More than we want to mention.
Anyway, my pleasure to move the resolution regarding the Niagara Age Friendly Resolution.
It's moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Morocco. Any discussion to the motion? Okay, we'll call the motion. All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous.
And, Mr. Mayor, if I may just add, if we can be of any assistance to staff or in looking at forming any committees, we're available to assist in any way possible. And thanks again for this opportunity.
Thank you, we appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, next item for presentation and deputation, we've got Michelle Marcott, Community Artists Niagara, ready to speak to council? Welcome.
Thank you, and thank you very much. On behalf of the boards, Board of Directors and the members of Community Artists Niagara, thank you for your time, for allowing us to make this presentation, and for focusing on the needs of visual artists in Niagara Falls. This is what we want the future of visual arts in Niagara Falls to look like. We want a multipurpose visual arts center in a good core location. We want exhibit spaces for all artists with changing exhibits and focused on improving artist income through links to local post-secondary education institutions, links to the private sector, artist referral services, and a private-public donor network. We need space for adult classes, for workshops, for art guild, and art club meetings. And we need a profit-oriented gallery store. We need space for working artists in residence as art educators, and a cafe, a place for artists to meet and to spur their creativity and collaborative efforts, and a space for catered functions. Our report delivered to you today discusses our current funding and space problems and the research basis for this situation analysis. Niagara Falls has lost its Queen Street Community Art Gallery. Community Arts Niagara, Artists Niagara, was the most broadly, is the most broadly-based and open organization for artists at all levels, and provides art services to the city. But unlike several other arts organizations, it has received no funding or space from the city. Insufficient space is available for artists to exhibit, to teach, and launch public programs. The visual arts community is fractured and badly organized to the detriment of all. The critically important need for artists' continuing development and exhibit space has been lost. And lack of leadership means infrequent grant applications and insufficient results and lost funding. Community Artists Niagara believes we could do more to work together to improve the lives of artists and the economic viability of the city. This is our assessment of the outcomes of a visual arts center. We would have a cultural center that builds pride in Niagara Falls. We would reactivate the professional artist community and improve artists' incomes. We would grow the city's innovative artist community and channel their creativity to economic development. We'd satisfy the needs of the increasing and affluent senior population and grow the valuable retired community. We would enhance the commercial viability of the retail core or Queen Street. We would have projects and programs that attract private and government funding. Now, the reason that I say we would enhance the commercial viability of the retail core or Queen Street is because this center needs to be in the downtown core where the artists are. We need political commitment to the realization of a visual arts center. You are the key to the realization of this visual arts center. Staff resources need to be assigned to begin the necessary visioning, stakeholder collaboration, site planning, financing, and other activities. And I'm sure you've got a few roaming through your mind right now as well. We need to work with Community Artists Niagara and other arts organizations to result in the best outcomes for the City of Niagara Falls and its people. Thank you from the Board of Directors of Community Artists Niagara. We're ready to work with you to realize a visual arts center in a good core location. We hope there's time to begin the discussion and plans tonight to launch this idea into action. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Marcott. Are there any questions or comments of council of Ms. Marcott? Now, I don't see our Director of Recreation and Culture in. Do we have anyone representing today? Now, Ms. Marcott, I'm not sure if you're aware, at our last council meeting, we referred your concern, your issue of looking for space to staff for a report back to council. I'm not sure if you were aware of that.
Yes, we've been meeting with city staff quite a number of times, and they've been great. But the fact remains, there is no exhibit space in the city other than the Victoria Public Library, the one room there, which is usually booked. And the spaces that are funded by the city are really not available for teachers or for artists to work or for exhibits. As I explained, we've delivered this report to council today through the city clerk. And that explains the research basis for some of the things that we've said today. We have worked with city staff. They have made a lot of suggestions. They've suggested that we talk to a lot of different people, and we have done that. And that is why we're saying that there is insufficient space for artists in this city, that we need a visual arts center, and that we are hoping that that gets put into action soon. It's been in the city plans for a number of years, and I think now is the time to act.
Well, unless there's a comment from council, the way it's left right now, I mean, council tonight, I don't think is expected to make a decision tonight. But they did make a decision at our last meeting to ask staff to report back so that we can see what our options are. We're coming into budget season now, and we could look at if there's a fit, and if so, how that might be. But until we get that report, we don't have our Acting Director of Recreation and Culture here tonight to even comment on the status of the report right now. So maybe if we could get a motion to receive tonight's report, Counselor Morocco?
Yes, I would, but I have to say that Congress is disagreeing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I think the very first step is, in addition to the report that staff is working on, is for the group to apply for a grant for the two thousand and thirteen budget cycle. We, our staff is sending out those requests now to community groups. And so, we'll make sure that we send one out now so that that gets in front, so that we consider it during the budget cycle.
Okay, that's great.
But right now, we don't have any extra money right now to be able to deal with it in this current fiscal year, but we certainly would be looking at it next year.
Yeah, I just remind council that there is a memo from Ms. Maldenhour in your package this evening which outlines what has been done to date. It sort of echoes what Ms. Marcott said. Our city facilities are probably inadequate for their purposes. We have, through business development staff especially, directed them to some private property owners. But of course, private property owners are going to want rent, and that's going to be difficult.
Mr. Mayor, did you want to comment?
We do appreciate the opportunity to apply for grants for funding next year. We would note that we have been recently asked to do, to continue the youth art contest, which we've done each year as part of the services that we've provided to the city without being funded. And we do need to rectify that situation, and we outline that in our report. But we need bigger-than-small annual fixes. We need a visual arts center in Niagara Falls. We've outlined the research basis for that and for the space allocations. We've taken a look at some of the economic development spinoffs. We've been very happy to talk to city staff about that as well. And we're asking for a bigger vision, a more ambitious vision than year-to-year funding.
We appreciate that. And as our clerk pointed out, we do have a little bit of an update here from our Acting Director of Recreation and Culture. We'll wait for this report to come back. We'll get the application out for you for the funding, and then we can discuss it. Because there's no question arts are important. It's just a matter of planning for it. You know, we want to make sure that we move forward in a planned-out way. So we've got a motion to receive your report tonight by Counselor Morocco. If I can get a seconder on that, by Counselor Peter Angelo. Is there any discussion to the motion? We'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. And as soon as we've got this back to us, then we're going to have to get back in touch with you, and then we can discuss moving forward.
That would be great, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for your time. Okay, now we move on to the planning part of our agenda tonight. I'd ask our city clerk if he could introduce the next item on the agenda.
Your worship, on October twenty-fourth, two thousand and eleven, council held its first public meeting on the Garner South Secondary Plan. In light of the time between then and now, the purpose of this meeting, this public meeting this evening, is to receive any final information from the public and have council consider the adoption of the Official Plan Amendment. Notification was given in accordance with the regulations of the Planning Act by placing an advertisement in the Niagara Falls Review on Saturday, August twenty-fifth, and giving notice by first-class mail to various persons and authorities. Any person who wants notice of the adoption of the Official Plan Amendment shall leave their name and address on the sign-in sheets outside of the council chambers.
Thank you, Mr. Ardefina. I now ask Mr. Illich, our Director of Planning, to explain the purpose and the reason for tonight's public meeting for the Garner South Secondary Plan.
Thank you, worship. The property involved is five-hundred-and-fifty-five acres south of Macaw Road and west of the QEW. It's outlined in blue on the screen in front of you. So basically, land from Brown Road up to Macaw Road, basically Garner Road over to Kayla Road, and then an area between Montrose and Kayla Road down to Chippewa Parkway. The Garner Road Secondary Plan is a detailed land use plan that will be guiding development for this area for the next ten to fifteen years. It's designed to accommodate, or it accommodates, two-hundred-and-twenty-five hectares of land, that's five-hundred-and-fifty-five acres of land. We expect a population of six-thousand-three-hundred-and-ninety people in that area to be accommodated in about twenty-seven-hundred dwelling units. And that, as well, there are employment lands, and that we're anticipating, based on the acreage generation, of about two-thousand jobs in that area. The plan was designed to conform with the growth plan for the Greater Golden Horseshoe, and it takes into account their requirements, so the provincial requirements, for a mix of land uses and housing types. As the city clerk outlined, we had a public meeting almost a year ago. And because of that public meeting, we had some input from various landowners. We've been working with them. But we want to just, again, remind council what the land use schedule is about. So Schedule A three in this secondary plan that's in your agenda tonight is depicted here. It's a very colorful version. The lands, as I said, are south of Macaw Road extending predominantly to Brown Road. But it also includes some land south of Brown Road, which involves Heartland Forest, which is outlined in gray, and our Montrose Business Park, which is one of the purple colors. There are significant natural heritage features. These are streams, creeks, wooded areas, and provincially significant wetlands. Those are all identified in the dark green colors. We've identified the need for some municipal parks. Those areas are identified in light green. We've also identified the need for a mix of housing uses, the residential, single-family and two-families largely white color, medium-density townhouses, and walk-up apartments, the yellow color. And then, there's kind of an orange color right near Macaw Road, which would be a higher density. And again, higher density to try and accommodate those landowners for the loss of developable area due to the wetlands. Primarily, the comments involved, a number of comments from SciTech. And SciTech was concerned that we had not incorporated building height policies from Official Plan Amendment eighty-two, which was debated at the Ontario Municipal Board. So we had comment, or discussions with SciTech and Warren Woods, principal developer in that area. And we've been able to make a agreement, and those revisions have been made to the plan. SciTech was also concerned that we not include multiple-family housing types too close to their facility. So we have made revisions to provide for lower density within a two-kilometer arc of their facility. SciTech also asked that we remove a residential block that straddled that two-kilometer block. We did that, and we have, in fact, changed that to neighborhood commercial. They added that, or asked that we not allow for any gathering places within that two-kilometer arc, so we've incorporated that wording. Gathering place might be a church, for instance. Community hall would be an area where people might gather. They've added, asked for wording that we require submission of emergency evacuation plans. This is primarily for senior citizens who perhaps, and I'm talking about nursing homes here, where they may not be as ambulatory, so we've incorporated that wording. SciTech had two other concerns. One was that we refine our policy regarding additional height and density. So we've incorporated that wording. And because SciTech owns Thompson's Creek, they had some concerns with respect to our policies regarding the process of how Thompson's Creek would be used as a drainage course for development. And so therefore, we made revisions to respect SciTech's ownership of that creek. Warren Woods Development, or Land Development Corporation, I mentioned, is the primary developer in that area. They made a number of requests as well. Many of these were back-and-forth negotiations, which is why it's taken a year. So they required a change in wording regarding consistency of collector roads. We made that change. They required an inclusion of lands within the built boundary and the way in which we calculated our density on retail lands. We were able to review that with them, and they were satisfied with our calculation once they saw how we achieved that. They requested the deletion of a policy that prohibits the conversion of the East Precinct employment lands to non-employment lands. Again, they were satisfied once we reviewed the policies with them. The inclusion of places of worship under neighborhood commercial were excluded. Again, this is, I mentioned this a little bit earlier. This is a gathering place by SciTech's requirements, so they were agreeable to have that removed. They were seeking clarification on the requirement that sixty percent of the Eastern Precinct be developed with employment use prior to establishment, any live-work use. That was clarified, that it was land area, not necessarily floor area or one of the other kinds of measures that we might typically use in planning. We, they were seeking an increase in building height for the live-work units. We were able to accommodate that request. They had a request for the exemption of policies regarding stormwater management. We were able to make those modifications as well. They were seeking some wording to be added regarding the allocation of road costs if the costs were not covered by development charges. So again, we made it clear that the developer would be responsible for any costs of road improvements that were not covered by DCs. There are, for instance, some existing roads in that area that may not be affected by DCs. They were also seeking modification of the concept plan. That was a colorful plan I showed you at the beginning. And again, we were able to accommodate that to show some medium density on the west side of Kayla Road. We also made modification of the phasing plan to more accurately reflect the progression of development through the plan, the phasing being the extension of services, basically from the southeast of the secondary plan to the northwest. We also had comments from Piero, what do I want to say? Mercara, Morocco, thank you. And he had concerns regarding the extent of the natural heritage that affects his lands. Unfortunately, those are set by the Ministry of Natural Resources and the Conservation Authority. We've had to put him in touch with them. Robert Miller, planning consultant, had some concerns regarding the requirements for Thompson's Creek. Again, as I said, we've, we're able to make some changes to the text and revise the figure. But it's a colorful schedule I showed you. So in conclusion, the, since the time of the previous public meeting, staff have been in discussion with the various landowners. We believe we've been able to resolve all of the comments that we received. We've made the appropriate modifications to address those concerns. We're recommending the Garner South Secondary Plan be adopted this evening. It's included in your agenda. And this Garner South Secondary Plan represents the growth area for the next ten to fifteen years of the city. Therefore, we're recommending that council adopt Official Plan Amendment ninety-nine. Therefore, we're recommending that council adopt Official Plan Amendment 99 later in the agenda, and that it be forwarded to the region for approval. Those are the highlights.
Thank you, Mr. Hirlovich. Are there any questions from council? Yes, Counselor Maves.
Yeah, Your Worship, through you to Mr. Hirlovich, I'm just wondering, looking at the map and seeing the number, the large acreage in green, and that is all wetlands?
Yes, that's correct.
I believe we took that up in Ottawa, and the ministry, I believe, do they do a flyover to determine these wetlands, or how do they do it? Because I'm just wondering, how do they determine, is there a depth of water on these wetlands? Is it topsoil, is it quicksand? Just exactly what is that? I'd like to know how they determine that, because it seems like there's an awful lot of green there, and I wonder if that, that can be property earth put in their place so you can use it for property eventually, or is it all going to be forever wetland?
It's pretty much forever wetlands. So, no, it's not, you're not going to find standing water in those areas, which you're going to find, this area is filled with what they term sloughs, so they're basically ponds of organic material, basically leaf and tree, broken-down vegetation that's accumulated over time in the low depressions, and those are basically soak up the water from snow and rain, and then they support plant life and animal life. So, but the boundaries, as you outline, are done primarily from air photos. So as we go through, step by step, so the yellow areas, for instance, that are shown on there that have all sorts of fingers of green, those landowners will be able to do site-specific environmental impact studies to refine those boundaries, so they could be reduced through those studies, and that will come about through the subdivision process. But the, the identification of the green means that they do have to do those studies relative, prior to doing any planning for it.
So I'm just wondering, when you look at places like Florida, and they have these Everglades and whatnot, next they know they pile sand in there, and you've got a subdivision in there, and I wonder if this can't be the same thing happen here on these, on these particular wetlands? Is there, is there any, as you say, is there no change to that, or is it, is always going to be that way?
As far as I know, it'll be that way.
Perhaps Counselor Thompson has an answer to it.
Yeah, Counselor?
Yeah, I, this is really upsetting when you see this, an aerial photo that the Conservation Authority puts forward and said, "These are wetlands." There are so many people who are negatively impacted by these photos, and then they have to spend thousands of dollars, tens of thousands of dollars, to have reports that take sometimes over a year to prove that these wetlands are substantially reduced. But to, the whole system is wrong. There's a lady on Montrose Road, just near Niagara Square. Her father left her, I think, 600 feet of land plus 400 feet deep, and they've just identified it as a wetland. So really, and there are several owners on the property, and it's going to cost her tens of thousands of dollars to have a study over a year period to determine if, if any of the lands can be used whatsoever. So I agree 100% with your current concerns about the wetlands, and it's unfair.
Matter of fact, recently, Counselor Maves and myself and Counselor Merkka were in Ottawa at the Association of Municipalities of Ontario Conference. We brought this up with the Ministry of the Environment, and it said, you know, we've got two provincial policies conflicting. We've got one of economic development conflicting with what they're calling wetlands. And we said, you know, you can't do a flyover and then sterilize all the land. What are we supposed to do here? So we expressed our frustration, it's with not just Niagara Falls, it's all of Niagara South, Port Colborne, Welland, you go through the entire Niagara region. And they, they appreciate the situation, and they are addressing it. Especially frustrating, as Counselor Thompson said, most of this was largely done with a flyover. They didn't actually walk the land. And how you can determine, you know, the, the status of the land in that way escapes me. Do we have any other questions or comments of council of Mr. Hirlovich?
Okay, now we open it up to the public. Members of the public are advised that failure to make an oral or written submission at this public meeting may result in the Ontario Municipal Board dismissing any referral that it receives. So council will now hear from anyone who wishes to speak to the proposed official planned amendment. Do we have anyone here that would like to speak to the amendment? Nobody's here for the amendment? No, well, okay, that's good then, that's right. All right, we'll ask council one more time. Is there any final questions of council before we close the public meeting? Okay, then the meeting is now officially closed. I'm looking to council to make a motion on this amendment. Okay, Counselor Thompson?
I would move the amendment, there's been a lot of time and effort put in, and according to the report, it looks like most of the concerns on either side have been resolved, and an explanation of one for our information. So I, I would also like, maybe if later on, got the new business, if Councilor Maves would make a motion with respect to the flyover designation of wetland motion onto the government to see if we could have a look and help some of these people who are really have acres and acres of land that are probably useless as far as any kind of consideration of development.
Okay, yes, Counselor Merkka?
Just to that point, I think we just need to have clarification, was it a flyover, did someone actually go out there and see? So I support the fact that we need to have someone check on that land, and was it on a ready date, because there's various variations of that. So I would like to have a little bit more information brought back on that as well, and regarding the wetland.
Now, that specific part that we talked about, is that what you're referring to, Counselor?
All the, all the wetland area that was shown.
Right, in the, in the picture that was on the screen. Mr. Hirlovich, can you help us out? Do you have any further information in terms of the land that we're discussing right now, and how they were able to determine it was wetland?
The, they do, they base those boundaries on air photos. They do have a, a formula by which they assess the wetlands, but by and large, they're looking at the form of the habitat, so they may not have gone out and done specific surveys, but knowing the type of habitat that would be there, then they would expect to find certain plant species and animal species, and so they rank the wetlands according to those. But they may not have specifically studied it, as much as Counselor Thompson alluded to, and that is, someone would have to actually do a three-season study. So basically, from the time the winter snows leave, to the, the spring thaw, and we have new life coming in, the plants that are blooming, seeding, reproducing, the animals that are feeding on those, down to, you know, maturity of those animals and plants for the summer, and then the dispersment of seeds and so on through the fall. So those, that three-season study, as Counselor Thompson says, basically takes a year. So by the time you've studied for, for three seasons, you're writing your report, and the fourth season of the biologist is. So I don't believe that level of study has occurred, but they've used the formula by which they would typically find those features. But I think what's really important here with the secondary plan is that we're planning for the growth of the area, and that we do have the possibility of 6,000 new residents moving into this area. Council's going to be dealing with the next application, which is yet another form of development that's going on in this particular area. So really, this is a growth area, and so that's what we're planning for. We do have to provide for natural protection, but I'm, I'm willing to work with the ministry and the Conservation Authority to bring back a more detailed report as to what work was done in establishing these boundaries and what information was gathered. So, so that I can provide, but certainly from a planning perspective, it's, you know, the growth and development that we're trying to achieve tonight.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Merkka, then Maves, Cario, Gates.
Your Worship, I have to just say that I'm just feeling a little bit uncomfortable right now to the fact that we don't have a proper report, a report back on the wetland, so I'm not going to support this. And I'm also just not feeling very comfortable, I don't know, I sometimes get, you know, that gut feeling about certain things, and this is one of them that I just have to sit on. I'm not too sure I'm feeling comfortable with SciTech, the wetlands, I'd like to know about the wetlands, the leakage that may go into the property and the development. I mean, I know that we want to develop, but we want to develop safe and make sure that the areas are a healthier environment for our families that are looking to move into that area if we're going to develop there. I just, so that's just my reasoning, not supporting this.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Maves?
Yes, Your Worship, I think Counselor Thompson made a motion to accept the report, but, and I'd second that, but the other thing is too, as far as this, these pictures taken, an aerial photograph, we don't know whether the ditches and that were cleaned in those areas, and I'm sure a lot of them haven't been cleaned in a long time, so there would be water sitting to, to a great degree. And I think that really we do need a, send a resolution or something to the, to province to have this redone, and possibly I'm going to need the clerk to help me drop a, a motion on that, because I'm sure it'd be quite complicated. But I would like to make a motion that we do approach the province to, to rethink this thing and take another look at it, and do a more thorough study, because I'm sure there's good property there that could be used for housing.
Okay, so first off, you are seconding Counselor Thompson's motion to accept the, the official plan amendment, is that right? Okay, thank you. And then we'll deal with that, that motion after this one. Counselor Cario?
Thank you, Your Worship. I'm going to support the motion, so stands the wetland issue is an issue between us and the Ministry of Urban Natural Resources, we have, it's an ongoing fight, so that's not going to stop my support for the motion. We have to accept some of the responsibility for the wetlands, Your Worship, because as Counselor Maves has indicated, I think it's a, it's a bit of a result from cutback on our ditching, drainage, culvert replacement, in those areas. We get complaints about that all the time, and the budget's been cut, cut, cut. I'm sure that Mr. Holman could attest to the fact that you need more money out in rural areas to keep our ditches clean. A lot of them, if you drive through the country, they're all overgrown, there's trees, there's weeds, there's debris in all of our ditches. So if we let that happen, then after a rain, the land can't drain. And then when they go on to do a flyover, sure, there's a lot of water backed up, but I think we have to accept some of the responsibility, and it shows how important that our ditching and drainage program is. And I'd like to hear a comment from Mr. Holman to see if I'm off-base, or if that's part of the problem.
Sounds good. Mr. Acting CAO?
Mr. Mayor, that's certainly the cause for the creation here. I think the other part of it is the policies provincially have gotten stronger over the past couple of decades, so it's a combination of the two, and, and now the options to go in and clean out some of these ditches are less, are not available to us, because we have to be concerned about natural heritage and the habitat that is now using these facilities to thrive and exist. So it is a combination of stronger policies and cutbacks on the operations side.
Just a further comment, and this might be the time that we need to step up our ditching program and our drainage and our culvert replacements, not sit back and, and let them fall behind. We may have to step it up.
Especially if we're going to sterilize more lands. Okay, Counselor Gates?
Thanks, Mayor Doudatty. I'd just like to, I'm actually going to ask for a deferral. I, I spoke earlier about the fact that unfortunately for me, I've been out of town for the last three and a half weeks, bargaining, picked up my package, and I was actually surprised with the lack of people here today. This is a very big move for the city of Niagara Falls, when you're looking at an entire community of well over 6,000, make potentially new residents. There's a number of things that I'd like to talk to staff about and have this thing deferred. I've, I've talked to staff in the past about the channelizations, the pumping stations that are out there, and the costs associated with that, the upfront development charges, but I'd like to go back on my notes on that particular area of the, of the city, and to ask me to make a decision as important as this for the future of Niagara Falls, and like I said, unfortunately, I've been away bargaining with General Motors for the last three and a half weeks, and by the time I got to this, I know how important it is to, obviously, the developer, but I think it's just important to make sure that whatever we do out there, we can afford to do it, we can do it, to Counselor Merkka's point, we can do it in a safe manner, and I'd like to move for a deferral so I can do a little more research on this particular issue, because I've been out of town.
Okay, we'll see if we have support for the defer. There's a motion for defer, seconded by Counselor Wing, which means it's a non-debat, debatable situation. We're going to call the vote on a motion to defer. All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, so the deferral motion is defeated, okay? Is there anyone else who wants to speak to the motion? Counselor Peter Angelo?
Your Worship, I just wanted to say that I appreciate the comments from Counselor Maves, Counselor Cario about the ditching, but I don't, I don't think it's just the ditching, it's the actual water courses as well. There's a channel that goes right through this property that the city has now gone in, and we've sort of cleaned out and made sure that it's working well. And I'm sure that the aerial photographs that the ministry took were from before the time that the channelization was cleaned, so it's not, it's not just the ditching that needs to be improved, it's the channelization. I bet you if they went over top now and took a look, that, that the aerial photos would show something much different. It's not just in this area, we should continue with channelization in all areas.
Yeah, agreed. Counselor Thompson?
Yeah, I, I wouldn't be opposed to the, the furrow normally, but I, I think you have to have an explanation from the planning people and from the engineering people, how long we've been dealing with this. This Warren Woods development has been discussed here at council. When did we start this?
Knowing how the developer in the room, I'm going to say 10 years ago.
At least 10 years ago. And what about expenditures from the municipality regarding the drainage system, and to get to this point where this could be brought to us, there's been millions of dollars spent. This is within the urban boundaries, it's been identified as an area, so this is not something that we're just off the cuff bringing to council. And can, can we have some explanation to give some confidence to some people that this is something that has been studied and studied for the last 10 years?
Mr. Harrison, or Mr. Holman, do we have any idea what kind of money we've got invested into that area? Ballpark?
Well, Mr. Mayor, we've, I know that we talked about the Warren Creek going back at least to development charge bylaws, which are, have terms of five years each, so I think the initial planning for the Warren Creek watershed go back to the early 90s. But again, you know, the rules kind of change halfway through the process, development in that area has not advanced as quickly as we might have anticipated, but there is some additional work to be done there. And, and, you know, to Counselor Peter Angelo's comment, the work that has been done has changed some of the dynamics there, which would, has a potential to reduce the amount of woodlot and natural heritage features. And also, the additional work needs to be done on the Thompson Creek watershed, which will, which will also make some, some of the land more, more usable. So, but I think at this point, we're, we're just, you know, you have to take a snapshot of what exists today, we want to make a decision to move ahead, and as those studies are completed and development applications are advanced, you're going to find that some of these areas are reduced. And I think the concern or the frustration from the development community is, you know, why should we have to go through this exercise in the first place when some of these determinations are, seem to be arbitrary? I think in terms of costs, we're looking at, well, the, the Warren Creek is in the neighborhood of four or five million dollars. But it also provides an outlet for all the development that's taking place north of Macau Road as well, so.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Merkka, and Counselor Gates?
Your Worship, I have a couple of questions then. I guess with all due respect, I haven't been involved in the project for 10 years, and I'm not too sure, so maybe I'd like to ask through, staff through you, has there ever been any soil samplings out there and testing of the water because of SciTech plant? And I ask those questions because I used to live on Kayla Road, and that was a concern of some of the chemicals and leakage and the animals and certain things that happened in that area. So I'd just like to know, has there ever been any reports and studies in the 10 years in the land out there? Because I want to make sure, and if not, I'd like to bring forward a motion to have studies of the soil there, then I would feel comfortable about any development.
Mr. Holman?
Well, there had been soils work done with capital projects in that area, for the pumping station, some of the creek work, for example, but I don't think there's anything-
For any contamination?
It would have included sampling of the soil for any contamination.
And there was, there was no contamination?
There was no contamination. However, that's not to say that in some of the other areas-
Don't say however, I don't like that. Don't say however, because I, we're alike, we're not-
We've only, we've only studied site-specific properties, okay? We've only, we've only studied site-specific properties, okay? We haven't done an examination of the whole area. But that would be part of the development process, right? Be a condition of draft approval, for example, that some soils were...
Well, don't you think we want to develop, make sure the land is safe to build on before we actually take the leap and step out there and say, yeah, we can develop and get these fellas open up and they can start building and put people in the contaminated soil? I don't know. It just really has this very feeling with me. So I only feel comfortable if I know that the soil has been tested and the water out there is safe to build and develop. It's just common sense.
We've got our Director of Planning, Mr. Hrlivich, you want to comment on this?
Yes, Your Worship. The land that we've identified for residential housing has not been used for industrial purposes. These are farmlands. You know, we still have the Badger Farm out there. We bought land from Badger. These are the lands that Mr. Holman's referring to. The land south of that, we have the representative from Warren Woods here. He's put in roads and subdivisions. He's got his sewers in there. These are former farmlands. So everything between Brown Road and McLeod Road, which is where the residential development is, was farmland. It wasn't industrial land. SciTech is to the west of Garner Road, south of Brown Road. Yes, they have the sediment ponds there. Yes, they own Thompson Creek, which goes through an area south of Brown Road, not an area where we're proposing residential development. So quite honestly, you know, the lands have not been used for industrial purposes. Our official plan would require those studies that Alderman, or Counselor Morocco refers to, if they had been used for those purposes. But in doing an environmental site assessment, they have to look historically at what were the lands used for. So if they were used for industrial purposes, then they identify what were the industrial purposes? What industries, what chemicals did they use? Then they test for those chemicals. They don't just go out there and test for every chemical known to man. They're never going to be able to afford to do such a study. So they're going to look and say, was this industrial land? Was that agricultural land? They might test for some pesticides, herbicides, those kinds of things. But they're not going to be testing for lead, cyanide, arsenic, the things that we might find associated with SciTech.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, Counselor?
Just to that point, have you ever heard of leaching? Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Gates?
Thanks very much, Mayor Deodaddie, and I certainly do appreciate the history lesson from Counselor Thompson. But the reality is that I've only been here for a couple of years. And since I've been on council, I have raised the channelization. I've been very consistent on that particular issue. I have raised the pumping station. I've been very consistent on that particular issue. And I guess what I'm saying to my fellow counselors, that I actually go back and take a look at my notes. I want to make sure that my positions are consistent. I don't want to make a decision one way, one time, and then make one totally different than what I had done before. And that's why I asked for the referral. And I'm very familiar with that area. And I think I've talked not only with the fellow counselors, but with staff a number of times on that particular area out there. Because I have a lot of concerns. I'm concerned about the needs. Do we really need the needs of that much housing in this type of environment that we're in with the economy? But there's some things that I like to look at. So I do respect Counselor Thompson for giving me a little bit of history. But since I've been on council, I have talked on this issue a number of times, and I just ask for a little more time to take a look at it. My fellow counselors turned it down, and I'm fine with that. Thank you.
Sure, he's got a lot of history. The creek's named after him, so obviously he's...
With a P.
With a P, okay. Were there any comments? Any other comments or concerns? Yeah, Counselor Thompson with O P.
I'm not here to give history lessons, but I've been through this, I've listened to it. And when the engineer says they've got sewers in the ground for subdivision development, and they want to move on with it, we have approved all of these things throughout the years to get to this point. So now, somebody is not going to say at this point, no, you can't have this as a residential development area. It's already been approved. This is the final step, you know?
Okay. But we've got a motion by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Maves, that we approve the amendment to the official plan. Okay, so we'll call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, two opposed. Okay, so it passes. Right, thank you. Now, Counselor Maves, you wanted to bring forward a motion that our council go, look to the Ministry of the Environment at the way they've designated these wetlands?
Yeah, to re-study the wetlands and see if they truly are wetlands. We need a more in-depth study, I guess. I don't know exactly how to word that.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, I think in deciphering where Counselor Maves is going and some of the comments that the planner made, I would suggest that staff come back with a report on the Ministry of Natural Resources determination of the, of wetlands, and then that staff prepare an appropriate resolution to send off to the province.
Okay, go ahead and make that motion, Counselor Maves?
That's my motion.
Okay, sounds good. Seconded by Counselor Thompson?
Yes, but I want to make sure when you come back that my concern is the shotgun approach that they take with respect to wetlands. They just look at it, aerial photo, they don't go on the ground, and they just say, there's wetlands there. And then it's up to the individual to go through a year process and tens of thousands of dollars, and it always gets narrowed down to where the wetlands really are. So there has to be a better and fairer approach to the people who own this land. And the reason I feel so passionate about it, I just spent the last week dealing with this lady on McLeod Road who has this huge 24 acres of land and can do nothing without spending tens of thousands of dollars, and it was will to her by her father and three nephews, and they can't agree on how... So the land is stagnant. There's a poor sale sign. Nobody can do anything with it.
I had one situation too. I had a family come in to see me that they've got some land in the south end near Sodom Road, and same thing, it's been sterilized by this wetland policy. And so they came in, they can then get a break on their taxes if they can't do anything with it. Yet, to get that, to get the, geez, what is it, the Conservation Authority, you have to agree and sign off that you agree that it is a wetland to get the break. And he said, but I don't, I want to appeal this. I don't agree with the ruling. Well, yeah, you're entered into a situation that's very difficult to win, and it costs an awful lot of money. So we've got a motion by Counselor Maves, seconded by Counselor Thompson, that staff come back with a report on a resolution that this council will make to the MNR. Any comments to the motion? Counselor Wing?
Yeah, it sounds to me like where we're going with this is we'd like to see a physical on-the-ground examination of a property before it's deemed wetlands. And I guess that could work as long as property owners are okay with the ministry sending its representatives in on their property. So it might be some sort of give and take to permit the ministry the right to enter upon private property for these purposes. So I, you know, I can see where there is a need to actually physically go in. And I think it's not just water sitting there. I think it's actual species, flora and fauna, things that are at risk, threatened, endangered, and they're trying to maintain the biodiversity that we find in this province, particularly since we have Carolinian woodlands here, which is very rare in Canada. So I think it's a matter of finding a little different balance to what we have at the present time.
Okay. Mr. Clerk, you heard that part there too?
Yep.
Okay, great. Any other comments? We'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. Thank you. Next planning matter. Mr. Clerk, would you introduce the next item on the agenda, please?
Your Worship, a public meeting is now being convened to consider a proposed amendment to the city zoning bylaw to permit a proposed apartment building at 7549 Kayla Road. Notice was given by First Class Mail in accordance with the Planning Act on Friday, August 24, 2012, and by posting a sign on the property in question. Anyone who wants notice of the passage of the zoning bylaw amendment to participate in any site plan process if applicable or preserve their opportunity to appeal to the Ontario Municipal Board shall leave their name on the sign-in sheets outside the council chamber.
Thank you. Mr. Hrlivich, would you please explain the purpose and the reason for the proposed bylaw amendment?
Thank you, Worship. This property is located on the west side of Kayla Road, south of McLeod Road, exactly in the center of the Garner South Secondary Plan that we've just been discussing. The property is outlined in red on the map, and it was previously the site of ANA auto records. So it's a brownfield that was used for industrial purposes. The site was tested and cleaned up. And that site is immediately above Warren Woods' Phase One Plan of Subdivision, subdivision superimposed on this air photo, and the roads at the southern extent of that subdivision have already been constructed. The majority of the lands in the area are vacant. The lands basically to the northeast are the lands of Niagara Peninsula Energy, vacant lands to the east. Further north are lands within the Garner's North Subdivision area, some commercial properties, residential properties along McLeod Road. The applicants are proposing a change from development holding to a site-specific R5A zone, and they're seeking to construct two, three-story apartment buildings on the site with a total of 88 dwelling units. The buildings, these two buildings are shown in red on the site. The majority of the site is serviced by an underground parking garage. There's some limited parking on the north. They're looking for site-specific side yard setbacks. The building would meet the side yard setbacks for a three-story building, except for the fact that it's, they plan to have a pitched roof on the building so that it looks more residential and blends in with the future residential character of the area. And so because our height goes from the peak of the roof to the ground elevation, they're seeking a zoning to recognize that this interior side yard will be 5.35 meters instead of the required 7.35 meters. They're seeking that for both the south and the north lot lines. And the reason for the north lot line is that the Garner Secondary Plan shows a future road possibly coming in along that north boundary. And if that was to happen, that would be an exterior side yard. And so they just want to protect their development rights. Now, that road might not develop there. It's going to depend on the land developer to the north. They're also seeking to increase the maximum lot coverage from 30% to 36%. It's a relatively small amount. And we found that that was compensated by the fact that they're increasing the amount of landscaping on the site from 40% to 44%. So we'll require a higher level of landscaping, although there'll be a larger area of lot coverage than we would find in our standard R5A zoning. They're also seeking to reduce the height of the building, notwithstanding the fact that they just mentioned they want to put a peaked roof on there. Rather than having the standard 19-meter-high building, this building would be a maximum of 15 meters high. They also need permission to allow two buildings on one lot. Our zoning bylaw limits it to one building per lot. They're also seeking to amend the number of parking spaces on the site from 1.4 per unit to 1.25 per unit. That's supported because of the proximity to bus and transit routes. And certainly, as this area develops, transit will play a larger role in the community. I mentioned already the site's two and a half acres. They're seeking to go from development holding to an R5, I'd call it a R5C zone. And I outlined the various site-specific regulations that they're looking for. The provincial policy statement identifies these lands as greenfield area. We're required to provide 53 persons and jobs per hectare in a greenfield area. This development has a density of 86 units per hectare. This will assist in achieving that target. The lands are designated in the official plan as being residential. They're located along an arterial road. They're close to neighborhood commercial facilities. They're close to a planned school site. In the Garner South Secondary Plan, these lands are identified as medium-density residential, which anticipates buildings as high as four stories in height with densities of 50 to 75 units per hectare. Because it's a brownfield site, the policies allow higher densities beyond 75 units per hectare. As I said, this site would have 86 units per hectare. The application conforms with the official plan, conforms with the Garner South Secondary Plan. It's in keeping with these policies. It's suitable for medium density. The site provides ample green space for the residents, setback from the property lines, excuse me, and parking is mainly underground for this development. The site remediation, the official plan requires an environmental site assessment occur when the property's been used for industrial purposes. I mentioned it was ANA auto records. Those assessments were completed. The contaminated soil was removed, and the record of site condition has been filed with the Ministry of the Environment. The zoning bylaw that they've requested, again, from DH to an R5C with site-specific requirements to guide the development. The interior side yard, as I mentioned, is reduced due to the pitched roof. Without that, it would comply. The secondary plan anticipates a local road immediately to the north. I mentioned that. So they're seeking permission for that exterior side yard requirement to be less than what would be normally required. The applicant has requested modest increase in building coverage, but that's offset by the landscape open space. Parking, I mentioned, is acceptable. And the bylaw should include a minimum requirement of 50 units per hectare. That's one of the requirements of the secondary plan to set minimum standards, again, in compliance with provincial growth plans. Therefore, we are in support of the application to change this from development holding to R5C. It would permit two, three-story apartment buildings, total of 88 units, conforms with the region's policies, the provincial policies, city's official plan, the Garner South Secondary Plan. The site has been remediated, and official plan amendment 99 is on the agenda tonight for adoption. Therefore, we are recommending the zoning bylaw amendment application be approved.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hrlivich. Any questions of council or any comments of council? All right. Members of the public are advised that failure to make an oral written submission at this public meeting will result in the Ontario Municipal Board dismissing any referrals it receives. Failure to sign the sign-in sheet will result in staff rejecting an appeal as per section 3419 of the Planning Amendment. Council will now hear from anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak the proposed bylaw amendment. Anyone here that would like to speak to this, other than the applicant? Okay, seeing none, council will now hear from the applicant or his or her representative. If you state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Jennifer Vida, and the address is 261 Martindale Road in St. Catharines.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, good evening, Your Worship, and members of council. I'd just like to say that we're here to thank Mr. Hrlivich for his presentation. He's covered all of the details, and we are in agreeance with the recommendations. And we're also here to answer any questions that council may have on the application.
Any questions of council, Ms. Hrlivich? Counselor Carrillo?
Just exciting, Your Worship, to see someone coming forward wanting to build some apartment buildings without asking the city to subsidize them.
All right then. Okay, any other comments or questions? All right, that's great. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Public meeting with respect to the proposed zoning bylaw amendment is now concluded. Counselor Thompson?
Yeah, I would move the adoption of the report. This was a real eyesore and certainly an impediment from the Warren Woods going ahead. They've taken a lot of time, removed all of the contaminants, and this would be a little bit isolated, but a great site for a new development such as we've seen there. So I'd so move.
Okay, moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Maves. Any discussion of the motion? Counselor Gates?
Yeah, I just want to make sure, again, that I have the right, the right property of land here. Now, is this the, where the apartments are going? Is this where the developer qualified for a, either a brownfield grant or a greenfield grant? And if he did, what was that amount? If I have the right, I'm thinking I have the right property that I'm talking about, but I could be wrong.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes, this is the property that did qualify for the brownfield exemption. Again, I don't know right off the top of my head what the amount of the brownfield exemption was, but it did, for the CIP exemption, it did, it did, it did qualify for this.
I believe in it, just to, because I talked to you, I think, on this issue a few times. I believe it was around, somewhere between six and eight hundred thousand dollars. It would be, that sound kind of fair?
Approximately. I'd have to check our records exactly, but certainly there was a DC exemption portion and then there was also the TIF portion. So there was both elements to it. And again, the TIF portion would be based on what the ultimate value of the property was, so that would, that would determine it. So it's within a range.
Thanks, Gary. Mr. Hurlovic, you know?
They haven't received that money. As the treasurer says, they're eligible for the TIF funding. They won't get that TIF funding until they actually build something in which they get, excuse me, a rebate back on, even on the property taxes they pay. I believe they got some money to actually do the study to determine what contaminants were there. But, but, congrats. Well, whatever.
It's important to note that the way the program works, that they actually have to spend the money rehabilitating the land and they have to document the expenses that they've had to rehabilitate the land, to get rid of the residue of the car wrecking business. And that's what the purpose of the program council's approved is for, is to enable properties like this to, rather than sit stagnant, to actually come forward with development. And it's worked as, as Mr. Hurlovic was explaining, it works through a tax rebate system over time. And of course, they have to prove that they actually spent the money on the approved expenses.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments of council? I think we'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, unanimous. Thank you very much. Moving along to our last public meeting, I'd ask the clerk if he'd introduce the next item on the agenda, please.
Your worship, the next item is related to a proposed telecommunication facility. Industry Canada is responsible for licensing and approvals for telecommunication equipment of facilities across Canada. Industry Canada has a mandatory consultation process that requires the proponent to consult with local landowners and land use authorities like the city prior to the construction of the facility. Although this is not considered a public meeting under the Planning Act, as part of the consultation process, city council will hear from the proponent, any interested parties, and will consider the staff recommendation report. Therefore, a meeting is now being convened to consider a telecommunications tower at seventy-seven fifty Netherby Road.
Okay. The agent for the applicant will now provide an overview of the proposal. Is the agent available to do that, please? Mr. Khan?
That's correct.
Okay, great.
Good evening, your worship and members of the council. SBA Canada and Wind Mobile have proposed a telecommunication tower at the southwest corner of Netherby Road and Shill Road. It's a forty-five point seven meter monopole telecommunication tower. We received quite a number of concerns and comments from the public. We had completed the public consultation process through a public open house and we also distributed notification brochures to residents within three times the tower height of the location. A lot of the concerns regarding this tower were basically visual impacts. And so what SBA Canada had done is they changed the design of the tower from a self-support tower to a monopole tower. Now, a self-support tower is basically, it looks like a hydro transmission tower. And so the proposed tower is more of a, is a slim monopole tower. It's more aesthetically pleasing. And to mitigate these visual impacts, SBA had contracted a company called Tower Engineering Professionals to conduct a visual impact study. And so what this visual impact study included was, it included a balloon test. And basically, a balloon test is, as shown, as it sounds, a balloon is airborne in the air for the height of the tower. And various photos are taken from, from different locations to show what the tower would look like. So as you can see, the rest of the slides basically show different views of the location of the tower and the proposed tower. Yeah, we changed the design also. SBA Canada has also, is willing to plant white spruce trees, also to mitigate the view of the tower. And so these towers, these trees will be around three meters in height. And according to the Ministry of Natural Resources, these towers, these trees can grow up to twenty-four meters to thirty meters in height. So we concur with staff's recommendation on providing concurrence for this tower.
Okay. Are there any questions of council from Mr. Khan? Counselor Peter Angelo?
Thank you, your worship. And thank you for being here. I noticed at the beginning of your presentation, you said that we've completed the necessary steps and one of them was to have public consultations.
That's correct.
You had a night where you brought the public out?
That's correct.
Okay. And in, in one of the comments, it says, why was not a representative from SBA and/or Wind available tonight? Were you there at the meeting?
Yes, I was.
Wow.
We are the, we're the proponents for SBA and Wind. Fonture International is responsible for consultation.
So SBA and/or Wind didn't actually?
I did not attend, no.
But they wanted to be their tower?
Right.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments of council from Mr. Khan? Okay. All right, thank you. Counsel will now hear from anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to the proposal. Anyone here that would like to speak to this proposal?
I'd love to speak.
Yes, sir. If you could step up to the mic, please. Can you state your name and your address for the record, please?
My name is Tom Willlett, W-I-L-L-E-T-T-E, and I live at seventy-seven thirty-seven Netherby Road in Niagara Falls. My wife and I live at seventy-seven thirty-seven Netherby, across the street from the proposed site of the tower. It's a forty-five meter tower that will be directly opposite our front window, about, will be about a hundred meters away from it. I realize why infrastructure decisions such as these are handled by Industry Canada, which more or less shuts out municipal, provincial, and some federal considerations. But would have thought that those in the cell tower business, having that hammer, would try not to create problems with nearby residents when it was unnecessary to do so. Obviously, I was wrong. The Bell Canada telephone lines in our section of Niagara Falls will not support enhanced telephone services, let alone high-speed internet. So our home phone and internet operates off of a Rogers cellphone tower almost three kilometers west of our house, and our cellphones operate off of a Bell tower about a kilometer away. Neither service suffers because these towers are not situated close to Netherby Road. Excuse me. Our area has hundreds of acres of farmland, scrub brush, and forested areas where a tower could have been located with little or no opposition from area residents. But SBA, for some reason, decided to situate their tower as close to Netherby Road as possible. Naturally, the people who live in the shadow of this tower are not happy at the prospect of this structure looming over our homes. In SBA's site selection justification report for this tower dated April twenty-third, 2012, on page six is a statement, "A Bell Mobility Tower exists approximately one, two, one point two kilometers from the center of the search area. This tower was considered, despite being outside the, the search area. However, the height available for equipment on the tower, in addition to being quite a distance away from the coverage objective, meant that the tower was not suitable for Wind Mobile's coverage needs." On the next page, SBA claims that after reviewing Industry Canada's guidelines and the city's protocol, quote, "Meetings were held with multiple landowners in these locations," end of quote. I attended the information session in Stevensville on June the fourth that was held because SBA is, quote, "committed to effective public consultation," end of quote. I found that SBA is so committed that neither they nor Wind Mobile were at this session, but instead a consulting firm had representatives there to take any heat from those opposed. At that meeting, I was told by a representative that they would answer any questions that we had about the tower. I supplied a list of questions that I thought were well relevant. These included, if the tower was considered and then rejected, if the Bell Tower was considered and then rejected because of height available, would not a new tower near the railroad property be suitable? The railroad tower is at the south end, far away from our houses. I ask this because the Bell Tower is near the railway tracks about one kilometer west of the proposed, south of the proposed site. The railway property is a treat area about, is a treat area and has no houses near, anywhere near as close as those at seventy-seven fifty Netherby Road. I also wanted to know which other landowners were met with, as was claimed in the SBA report. Our property sits within two of the circles on the map on page seven, and no one had contacted my wife or myself. Nor, according to the landowners next to my property and those behind the proposed site, had they ever heard a word about this tower until notified that the site had been selected. A third question was whether or not the property owner at seventy-seven fifty Netherby Road had volunteered that site for a tower. To date, I have not had any of these questions answered. I did supply the consulting firm representative with the name and telephone number of a landowner with considerable acreage in the same area, who had told me that he probably would have agreed to the tower being on his property had he been asked. It could have placed the tower away from any residences. I have heard nothing more about that either. In my opinion, the main reason that SBA selected seventy-seven fifty Netherby Road as a site of the tower is that it was easy. The site is close to the road and already cleared of any trees or brush. The owner of seventy-seven fifty Netherby Road either did not think or did not care that his neighbors would be upset and agreed to have the tower on his property. After SBA had his name on the dotted line, there was no reason to look for a less controversial site, so no other landowners were contacted. I would like the city to recommend that SBA look for another site for this tower, as there are no shortage of tower sites in the immediate area that would interfere with nearby homes. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Willlett. Are there any questions of council, Mr. Willlett? Maybe we'll get our comments and then we'll see if there's some answers to some of your questions, some good questions.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else, anyone else other than the applicant who'd like to address the Maybe Mr. Khan, if we could just maybe get a couple of answers to some of the questions that Mr. Willlett posed.
Okay. So there's actually, Wind Mobile's RF engineering team had determined a site, they actually determined that there is a need for cell coverage in this, in this vicinity. They actually contacted various landowners within the area and none of the landowners showed interest of placing a cell tower. The only interested landowner that we received was from seventy-seven fifteen Netherby Road.
And then the other question regarding the suggestion, they had come up with apparently the suggestion of land that wasn't okay?
That's correct. There was a suggestion for a land that was a bit distant away from the search area. Wind Mobile's search area is a five-hundred meter radius. And within that radius, there was a existing cell tower, but there was too many antennas on that tower. And so it was, the maximum engineering capacity had been reached. The land next to that site that the landowner had suggested was a bit too far away for cell coverage needs.
Okay. Are there any questions right now or comments of council, of Mr. Khan or any of the residents or any comments in general?
Hi, I'm John.
Pardon me?
I would like to.
Yes, Mr. Willlett?
Yeah.
Did you want to come down to the microphone here?
I supplied Mr. Khan's, one of his, the people at this meeting that he's speaking of in Stevensville with a phone number of the farmer who owns all the property directly behind the two or three acre lot where they decided to build this thing. He owns, I don't know, fifty, seventy acres somewhere in that area. He initially told me that had he been contacted originally, he could see no reason why he would not have allowed the cell tower to go on his property, because they are paid for putting these cell towers up, as you know. So I supplied that name and phone number to Mr. Khan's coworker, and I have heard nothing back since. That property immediately abuts that two acres, surrounds it. It would be well within that circle that they show on your map.
So, yeah, Counselor Maribel?
Your worship, did we not have a situation like this come before us not too long ago? And I think what we instructed is that maybe they can go back and try and work it out, that they can find a location that's going to be suitable. I mean, I hate to put something in an area where it's just not welcome. Dean?
Yes.
Oh, sorry.
For the most part, most of these applications that have come to council have not been controversial and they've actually been on the consent agenda and approved. There have been a couple of instances where that hasn't been the case. The one instance you're talking about was the cell tower that was in the vicinity of Thoral Stone Road and Stanley. And there was a referral to staff to see if it could be repositioned, and I believe that wasn't possible. I know Chief Smith was involved in that as well. There was another application last year on Lyons Creek Road where, similar to this evening, where there were residents that came out that were opposed for a variety of reasons. Staff then, council made a motion and staff informed Industry Canada that there was local opposition. And my understanding is that that application didn't go forward. But ultimately, all you're doing is providing comment to Industry Canada on these things. However, like I said, in one instance where there was opposition locally and we went on record stating that opposition, that cell tower never happened.
So I guess then, what are you recommending us to do now?
Well, what are you saying? It's not our decision, but it looks like our opinion matters, seems. Is that what you're saying, Mr. Quick?
It could matter. Ultimately, it's up to Industry Canada whether it matters or not. I don't know in the scenario of Lyons Creek whether there were other factors as to why they decided not to go there. Like I said, in the situation of the cell tower that was in the vicinity of Thoral Stone and Stanley, that tower did go ahead.
Well, it's obvious that it does matter because I think there's just more than one resident. We're talking about a rural area, so I think that the majority of the people here are from that, that area there?
Yes, sir. There's only five, five or six houses that are directly affected by the tower. Quite rural, but the rest of it is open land where they can put a tower and not affect anyone.
So everybody was notified?
No. None of us spoke to anyone when they were looking for a site to put this tower.
Well, that raises another point. Okay, I'll.
See, part of it, I understand, is we're, we're just, and again, I know Counselor Wing is going to probably address this later, that they're only required to notify three times the height of the tower, I understand.
That's why I gave her the look. This is her point.
Well, if you're in the rural area, that doesn't go too far. Yes, Mr. Quick?
Yeah, and the notification process is the industry's notification process, and they do an advertisement in the local paper as well, I believe. It's not our notification process. Alex can probably confirm that.
Can we just follow through that? Okay.
If I could comment on that, your worship?
Yes?
The local paper may be Niagara Falls, because I live in Niagara Falls. My mailing address is R. Ford's Welding. I get, and I live just about six hundred meters from Cork, two hundred meters from Cork here. I get things from everywhere. And they did send a letter to me and I believe to other people received a letter from SBA saying, congratulations, we're going to have a tower for a neighbor. Other neighbors didn't get anything. None of us were contacted when they were looking for a site to put this tower. All of a sudden, you got a notification that the tower is going to be at seventy-seven fifty Netherby Road. Unless you can really think up a good reason why we shouldn't put it there. None of the landowners were notified or asked if they wanted a tower.
Counselor Peter Angelo?
Thanks, your worship. I know I heard one person say that perhaps we should defer this, but I don't really believe that we should be deferring it. I think that we need to make the recommendation to Industry Canada. I mean, we have some residents here that are telling us that there is a lot of land in the area and there are other places that it can go. So they're not actually opposed to a tower going out in the rural areas. They're just actually opposed to it going there. Now, if SBA wants to bring forward any other different sites, then I could understand that we could consider those. But right now, they're only talking about one site that's as close to Netherby Road as it can possibly be, and that's probably for servicing situations, I would imagine. But, your worship, again, the residents aren't opposed to the telecommunications tower going out there. They just don't like the site that's chosen. And I mean, I think that we should just simply pass the recommendation, but just change the wording a little bit so that it reads that we recommend, Industry Canada be advised that the city of Niagara Falls cannot support a telecommunications tower at seventy-seven fifty Netherby Road. And that SBA, your worship, source out other properties and come back to us as well. I know some of that.
Okay. So we've got the motion by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Gates. And with the suggestion, Mr. Willlett's already done some of the homework for them. Perhaps that might be a possibility. Is there any discussion to the motion, Counselor Wing?
Yes, that was the motion I was going to make. One of the things I noted is one of the correspondents had advised that there is no delivery of newspapers in that area, including Niagara
delivery of newspapers in that area, including Niagara this week, which is where I believe an advertisement about this had been placed. But a couple of things stood out for me when I read through this report and all the attachments. And one of them is that the opponents didn't really seem to be answering a lot of the questions and concerns, and the other one is this very significant gap in notification. I guess I have a question right now for staff. Can we impose our own notification requirement on top of Industry Canada's, or does it require a resolution from us to Industry Canada, asking them to adjust their notification standard so that we don't have people throwing, falling now, falling through these great big holes in the...
Mr. Beeman?
We cannot impose a standard, we can ask the results of the twenty-five piece of letter that you wrote, just that they want to go down, so use the image or whatever you want to do. I've read it out of the office, it's a citizen's intent, so, but we can do it.
You know, my other question too, just piggybacking on Counselor Wing's idea, if we can't make them do it, is there any reason why we couldn't do it? You know, also extend it into the surrounding area?
Well, we want to absorb the cost of it, so, I mean, with the two, they don't have to regulate it, so if you really, really want, that's the report for you, so the proponent has to do it.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Kirk, and then Counselor Peter Angelo?
Yeah, this has come up on some of our planning notifications in the rural area, where we've had people in this council chamber say, "I didn't get notified," and I've usually replied, "Well, you're here tonight, aren't you?" So people find out, and, you know, the applications that have been opposed by council, there have been people that have come up, have come out that have been notified, so I'm pretty certain that when there's a location that is, you know, engenders some opposition from residents, yeah, maybe everybody in the area didn't get notification, but usually enough people got notification to let you know that they're opposed to it.
Counselor Peter Angelo?
Your worship, just a couple of comments. I mean, if you are going to pass a resolution on to Industry Canada, perhaps you can stipulate in the resolution that there should be a difference between inside the urban boundary and outside the urban boundary in regards to distances. Obviously, inside the urban boundary, it would be smaller, because you would be capturing a lot more of the household, and outside the urban boundary, people don't live as close together, so you would want to go as a wider area. The other thing, your worship, is on the Committee of Adjustments, we, it's mandatory that they actually post a sign on the property, and I'm not sure if it's mandatory in this situation here. I mean, if they're applying for a license to do something, then they have to post a notice of meeting, and it says on the notification what the meeting is, and where it is, and what time it's at City Hall. So I don't know if that could be passed on to Industry Canada as well, just a friendly amendment, your worship.
Mr. Clerk?
We actually passed on those suggestions last year, when the one got refused on Lyons Creek. Part of that motion was that we circulate to Industry Canada that they improve their notification procedures, so obviously, we were successful.
Should we suggest that how, your worship, is what I'm saying?
Did you want to add that on to your...
Yeah, I mean, if you suggest ways that they can improve it, I mean, obviously, there should be a difference inside the urban boundary, outside the urban boundary in terms of distance and notification, and also the posting of a sign on the property, worship. I think, you know, maybe outlining it will help them to adopt one of them.
So would you like to add on to your motion, counselor, that in addition to the recommendation, including them hopefully utilizing Mr. Willett's suggestion, that they look at changing their notifications specifically when they're outside the urban boundary, and specifically with signage, as you do with Committee of Adjustment? Did you want to add that on to your motion?
That's fine, your worship, I think Counselor Wing might have done as well.
Yes.
Okay, Counselor?
Yes, I, I would see it added on to this one, rather than being done separately, and perhaps what they also need to do is publish the results of studies showing the effect on property value, because, you know, I keep seeing the same comment trotted out in response time and again, there's no published evidence that structures of this nature affect property values either positively or negatively. Well, then do some studies and tell us what the result is. And, you know, it may not affect property value, but, I mean, there's also the length of time on the market that is required for a property to sell. Somebody wanted a country property, drove out there and saw a big structure like that on the, you know, place across the street or next door, that could impact their impression of the property and how desirable they found it in terms of whether or not they want to live there. So I think there does need to be some comprehensive studies looking at the impact of these structures on nearby residences.
Okay. Any other, yes, Counselor Peter Angelo?
I apologize, your worship. One question I did forget to ask, and I don't know if it would be of SBA, was if there was any options in regards to aesthetics of the tower. I understand that there's some different towers out there, and they disguise them not necessarily as cellular towers, but as other things that look more natural, and I'm just wondering if those options are available, and if those can be given to the residents as well.
Mr. Khan, is there any camouflage-type mechanism?
There are, the majority of the concerns from the public were visual impacts. I'm going to talk a little bit back about the location. The other locations surrounding this site are too distant to, are too distant away, too far away to actually provide the coverage that it needs to these residential areas. Regarding the visual, regarding the tower design, we changed it from a self-support design to a monopole design, which is a bit more aesthetically. It's a pole, it's painted gray to match, blend in with the sky, that's what we're providing. It's a forty-five-meter tower, so camouflaging at that height is a bit more difficult, but a monopole tower is what's best located for this site.
Okay. Counselor?
Do we have a picture of that?
Do you have a picture of the tower?
We have it. We have photo renderings showing different locations, and that's what the tower is. And also, as I said, I mentioned earlier, SBA has also offered to plant trees to screen the area from the properties, and these trees will be three meters in height, and eventually, according to Ministry of Natural Resources, these trees will grow to twenty-four to thirty meters in height, screening the entire tower.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments of council before we call the vote? Okay, we'll call the vote. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Okay, thank you. Thank you, folks. Okay, next item on the agenda is our busker report, and I'd ask our clerk if he would please address that. Yeah, he's going to address it first, introduce it, and then jump to you. Mr. Clerk?
Yes, your worship, as noted, I prepared a report regarding buskers in the community, and the background on this is that the city does have in place a bylaw which regulates the playing of music on the public realm, and that bylaw has been in place since nineteen ninety-nine, and it was in response to various businesses here in the community. The report at that time made the point that the city receives from time to time complaints from citizens, store owners, and police regarding individuals and groups who stand on sidewalks and play musical instruments. Most of the locations chosen by these people are in the busy tourist core. As a result, the sidewalks become congested, and other people using the sidewalks are inconvenienced. Throughout the summer, we do have occasion where people will take their musical instruments and go on public sidewalks. We do receive complaints on those. We were approached by a local musician, Mr. Derek Moore, who will speak to you later. He would like to see changes to that bylaw, so he can apply his trade. Staff's not adverse to possible changes, however, we think that there have to be controls in place, otherwise you might have a free-for-all in areas like Victoria Center, where this summer especially, my bylaw staff received numerous complaints, not just of people doing activities in the public realm, but of other encroachments. So it should be noted that it isn't a total close shot for buskers here in this community. They're allowed to go onto private property. The Hoco property off of Clifton Hill has used performers in the past, the two casinos have as well. Also, we've encouraged as staff, the local BIAs, to consider busker events, and as you know, this past summer, or on Labor Day weekend, the downtown did have a busker festival that was successful, and I assume they will do that again. At this point in time, all staff is recommending that we once again just solicit comments from the various BIAs to see if they would like to see changes to bylaw ninety-nine sixteen. Obviously, in some areas, some BIAs, downtown, for example, might have some occasion to want to have some performers in the public realm. Others may find this to be too obtrusive, especially considering the limited sidewalk space. So I guess I'd ask you to hear from Mr. Orr, and then consider the report, and I'd be willing to answer any questions.
Okay, we'll do that. Mr. Orr? Okay, yeah, did you want to step up? Welcome.
Thank you, Chief Magistrate, City Council, staff, and public. My name's Derek Orr, I'm a musician and a busker. I've been a busker for twenty-eight years, twenty-seven years actually in the city on private property. Not all the time, but this is just the way it goes. I'm here advocating for musicians in our city that you already have, who have always been here. There's more and more every day. They're here. Buskers are here. There's other people, panhandlers, et cetera, that are already here as well. I'm speaking on behalf of musicians from our city. I'm a resident of Niagara Falls. I'm a musician in the city, which has a fair unemployment rate and whatnot, and seasonal work. As a musician, there's limited venues in which to play, and I have to play every day to provide for myself, to make a living. One of the ways in which I do it, that I'll resort to, is I will go to the street and perform for tourists. I've not once had a negative impact from any tourist whatsoever, anywhere, at any time. In fact, the only negative experience I've had has been from bylaw enforcement and Niig Regional Police. And that's why I'm here lobbying now, perhaps to change your bylaw, which states that any person or band who wishes to play musical instruments on any highway park or public place in the city must first obtain permission from City Council. Well, you know, and that's why I'm here. I'd like to request your permission to maybe reconsider your bylaw, and propose that you maybe amend this, add something, some sort of licensing process, where you can have control and establish an etiquette and understanding between the businesses and the public and the musicians, you know, to meet everybody's needs, who are citizens of the city, to establish an etiquette, and find a proper way of doing things, and come to some sort of agreement, and on a contract basis, with a fee, of course, such as they have in other cities, such as Kingston, and Toronto, and many other cities around the world, and all around Canada. There's, each city has its own method of an approach to this issue. It's an issue that's here, and I think it's time. For many years, I think that it was me and one other guy, but now, there's more and more people every day out there busking. Some people come through town, some people are residents here, and for a majority of the musicians are not, people are well-off. They're out trying to make twenty bucks to go eat. You know, it's a matter of people eating when they're down and out, it's a matter of supporting our local culture of music, and how our citizens want to represent our city to our visitors. I think that we can achieve this by designating a limited, like, amount of certain spots in the city. There's, there are high-traffic areas in a tourist area, but if we could come to a consensus of the, what areas are acceptable for the traffic of pedestrians, to not impede the flow of traffic, to not, and to, sorry, and to have a process in which somebody who comes and wishes to play, that there's, there has to be a process in place where they can register and take steps to be able to play, to get a license to play. People are doing it anyway. Also, there's a security issue with public safety and whatnot. You don't know who's playing on the street, who's here, you know, who they are or whatnot. This is, I mean, this is a tourist city, it's a border town, there's security issues with the city. And I think it'd be a benefit for the city to know who's there, and have information on them, do a police check, know who's there, and regulate what's going on. That's, I don't really know what else to say, I'm not a good public speaker, I'm sorry.
No, that's good. And you play, just for the record, it's a fiddle, or?
Yes, I play Celtic music myself. Yes. I just, I've been doing it a long time, and there's, people have been doing it all along. And I think, according to my understanding, when the bylaw was passed in nineteen ninety-nine, it was based on complaints from businesses. Well, every city that established a licensing program started out with complaints from businesses, and they've come to a consensus and an understanding and an etiquette, a proper etiquette, a proper busking, the way it should be done, and if you don't abide, you get a license, if you don't abide by those rules, you lose your license, and you can never do it again. And, I mean, and it's so easy, based on all the cities and their bylaws and their contracts, agreements, to come with our own consensus. We have the ability here to come up with the best plan for our city. I mean, each and every city has their own arrangement for their own city, and why, we should have our own. I truly believe that.
Okay, well, let's find out. Appreciate that, thank you very much. Are there any questions of council for Mr. Orr? Okay, none at this point. Okay, thanks very much. Thank you. Counselor Thompson?
Yeah, this has been discussed briefly by a couple of the BIAs. In fact, I don't know whether the clerk got an email from the Victoria Center, there was a motion asking, because this is a complicated issue, there were some very negative comments, and there were some positive comments about maybe setting aside an area where they could perform in, they cited somewhere in Florida, I think in the Keys, somewhere, where they organized this in a suitable fashion that doesn't negatively impact on the businesses. So the resolution they would like to see passed at this particular time is to refer to the individual BIAs to have feedback to the council and a report back to City Council. I would so move forward.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Wing. And Counselor Wing, you want to address it?
I think Counselor Thompson's referring to Mallory Dawkins, who has a great spot. I remember one year in the early nineteen nineties, the Niagara Parks held auditions, and allowed, gave out licenses for buskers in the park that year, and I think it might have been two years, and it was a really nice addition. I actually became friends with one of them. Mr. Orr probably knows him, George Mitchell, who's from the All-Time Fiddlers, and he was really, really well-received by the tourists, I recall. I like this recommendation from staff, just as with the food trucks, we're sending it to the BIAs to see what would be the most appropriate for their areas, and I really liked Mr. Orr's recommendations about licensing, and regulation, and etiquette, and I think also, if we're going to look at doing this, we should have a differentiated fee scale for resident and non-resident buskers, so we can help support our local people and not just have somebody come in and drift down from Toronto for a day and take away profit. That actually could be going to somebody local. So I'm really glad to see us at least examining this and possibly opening it up.
That's great, thank you. Counselor Morocco?
I'll support the motion, I just wanted to, I see in here that there's a couple of samples of bylaws from Kingston and also from Toronto, and I know that we... And I know that we do have quite a number of talented people in our city. They're very artistic. Caroline is one I see in the audience as well. She's a great artist. And I would like to make sure that if we're going to go back to the BIAs, that maybe they have some samples of different bylaws that they can see and maybe give them some information to go and some guidelines, so just an idea.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Gates and Carrier?
I just like to say to Mr. Orr and to the other people that are here, I actually, anytime I go out of town, I actually really enjoy watching buskers perform. I think you actually enhance the tourist sector, providing there are some rules and regulations and structure in place. So I actually really enjoy watching them. You know, I've had that dialogue with my wife a number of times. I'll drift off and go watch them all the time, so... And the second thing is, I congratulate you for out there trying to make a living. There's a lot of unemployment in Niagara, and to have some talent and to go out there and share that talent with the community, I think I commend you on doing that. And hopefully, through this process, maybe with the help of a lot of people, we can find a way to allow you to do your trade, do it well, and enhance the tourist sector as well. So thanks for coming, putting your presentation on.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Carrier, then Maves?
Thank you, Your Worship. Obviously, the right thing to do is to check with the BIAs and get their input. But if we're going to consider this, Your Worship, you also should consider that if it passes or if we go down this route, that the individual property owner, you have to have their permission. You can't, you have to have their permission for a busker to park in front of their place, whether or not it's a bylaw or not. A bylaw or not, it's not fair. And some of these business owners spend thousands, if not hundreds of thousands of dollars marketing their properties, pay big taxes, and I think some of them, the last thing they want is for somebody to park right in front of their property after they've done everything to drag all the people down to their business, so...
Thank you. Counselor Maves?
Yeah, Your Worship, I like the idea of the designated area as well. I think this could be, if it was open to all over the city, you could see it'd be a nightmare for a bylaw officer. I think he's got enough to do with our various smoking bylaws and pet bylaws and anything else. And also, the BIAs should definitely have an input in this, so I'd certainly support that.
You know, and also, I'd add to it that I too see the value in busking. When we were in Quebec City and Ottawa and old Montreal, same thing. And they've got specific areas, and they had mini bleachers set up so that people could sit and get comfortable. And I can tell you, in Ottawa, we actually sat at an outdoor patio where I could watch busking, and it was entertaining. I actually like to watch the people that are watching the buskers, you know, and to see the different... You know, you've got to put money in for the statue to start moving. And the other thing that I found of interest, so anyway, I love the idea, and of course, we have to check with our BIAs to see. I think it's in their best interest to have some designated areas. But my question is, and I'd ask this to the clerk, or maybe it's to our solicitor, our bylaw regulates bands and musical instruments, makes no reference to busking that I see. And busking's magic, juggling, balloons, comedy, fortune-telling, caricatures, fire-reading. And I'm wondering, I mean, in New York City, they've got the Naked Cowboy, which is a huge draw, and now they've got the Naked Indian, which, you know, is, now they're competing for the, and it's unbelievable to see Times Square, what happens there. So anyway, my question to the solicitors, currently, does our bylaw restrict busking or just musical playing? No, it doesn't make any mention, so I'm wondering, what does that mean?
Well, I don't know...
Thompson River.
You really want me to answer that?
Well...
The TV's on.
Pardon me?
The TV is on, and they're all set to go.
All right, I think I'm good.
You want to get with the BIAs and...
Thank you for that. Thank you for that. Thank you.
The bylaw was passed in nineteen ninety-nine based on a specific complaint. We didn't have any naked cowboys or Indians running around. We haven't had any naked cowboys or Indians. We haven't had any jugglers or that sort of thing. We do have other bylaws that we could probably deal with those things, so we feel we're, you know, we have enough tools in our toolbox, so to speak.
All right, good. So we've got a motion. All right. Moved and seconded. We'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay? It's unanimous. Thank you very much. Thank you. It's not open for that debate right now. We're okay. We moved it on, and we'll have your day in court, so to speak. All right, thank you very much.
Could you have the guy who told the store to arrest the police?
We'll work on that. Okay, next up is Mayor's Report and Announcements. First off, I would be remiss if I did not mention there are two very special birthdays yesterday, birthdays of the Waynes, Counselor Wayne Gates and Counselor Wayne Thompson. So we want to say a happy birthday to the Waynes yesterday. What's that?
They're both here today.
Same here. They're both like...
All I know is I'm tall.
What are you blowing down? Special report, just quickly, I just wanted to acknowledge that, as everyone is aware, that we had a very major accident last Wednesday with a truck hitting the overpass at Lundys Lane, which led to another accident, and it caused a lot of controversy in the city, a lot of anarchy, and... Are you trying to get something up on this?
Yeah, I need to get it back up.
Okay, we're going to have some pictures in a second. But we do want to have some special acknowledgement for a few individuals. I want to mention their names. In addition to our fire department, these individuals, Matthew Kopp, Doug Cornish, Mao Ray, Greg Gribble, Phil Beatty, they all work at Auto Dream Group on Kent Street, and they all came to the aid of the truck driver in the second incident. As you can see here, it was very serious. Luckily, the integrity of the bridge was not compromised. It was all aesthetic, but you can imagine if you were walking by that, down that sidewalk when that happened, what kind of a shock that would have caused. But you quickly realize how important that QBW corridor is as traffic was backlogged in all directions, as one of the major cross-border crossings on your way to Fort Erie. So luckily, I understand there were no deaths, and we want to commend those individuals at the Auto Dream Group on Kent Street, who quickly came to the aid, in addition, obviously, to our emergency medical and fire personnel, who were there to help bring order to the day. A few items I'd like to touch based on that happened. We had a special guest, Captain Joseph McNulty of the Department of Defense was here, the number of foreign military people from all over the world, actually, it was very interesting, from all over the world here to see the falls. This past week, we did our latest taping of Getting Chatty with Mary Di Addati as we focused on the Wego Bus System. St. Mike's this past week, St. Mike's Counselor Peter Angelo's High School hosted Swedish dignitaries, including five mayors. Very interesting to have them here in town. We had the Presentation of Colors last Saturday at Queenston Heights Park with the Countess of Wessex. And I have to tell you, it's the first time I've been able to meet any of the royal family, and what a charmer. She was a really, really wonderful, down-to-earth person. It was a real pleasure getting to meet her. And I'll tell you what, two quick stories. At one point, we had some veterans in the room, and one was older, sitting down in a stool in the back corner. She went and sat down with him, out of camera shot, away from everyone, and talked to this guy for about ten minutes. And at one point, my wife's dress, we were dressed in eighteen-twelve period costume, was kind of on the tarts, and she cut through a number of people to say, "Excuse me." She goes, "Your dress, I didn't want it to get in the tarts." And she pulled it away. Really down-to-earth, real wonderful individual, really understands the PR aspect of her job, so that was a wonderful experience. We went to, last Saturday night, there was a debate in Fort Erie whether who won the War of Eighteen Twelve, and one of the debaters was David Frum, who's originally from Niagara Falls. He's a son of Barbara Frum. Steve Paikin was there from TVO. It was a really great experience as well. We had the annual Parade of the Unknown Soldier last Sunday at Fairview Cemetery, then followed right after by the Terry Fox Run at Oaks Park. And we had Counselors Peter Angelo, Ianone, and Thompson there with us as well, and it was a real success. The weather was fantastic, and I understand they raised another record amount of money. United Way kicked off their five-dollar challenge. You'll see the pictures in the paper with the handout. The idea is that you give five bucks, whether it's five bucks all at once, five bucks a week, five bucks a paycheck, or whatever the case may be. But you look at increments of five dollars to kick off their United Way Challenge this year. Counselor Morocco represented the city at the Holiday Ramblers RV Club at the Jellystone Park. We also had, thank you for that, Counselor, Canadian Tire Jump Start. Canadian Tire currently is having their national conference in Niagara Falls, all the dealers across the country, all their gas stations, all the different aspects of Canadian Tire. Well, they also had a bike ride from Kingston to Niagara Falls. And one of the riders in the group was Anna-Lise Carr, the young lady who swam across Lake Ontario recently, young teenager. So they had an event fundraiser down at Table Rock, so I was down there for that as well. This past Saturday, Mayor's Youth Advisory had their leadership day right here in council chambers, so if any of your mints or your candies were eaten in your drawers, or there's something in there, any notes, we had our Mayor's Youth Advisory here. Fourth Annual Heartland Forest Hoedown took place this past Saturday, and it was a groundbreaking of the new fourteen-thousand-square-foot nature center, which will be fully accessible. And they had a big turnout for that event, and we're really excited for Dan Bowman and his group of volunteers. This past Saturday night, we had the Second Annual Greater GNGH Fall Ball at the Crown Plaza, and I was joined by Counselor Morocco and Maves as they were raising money for the foundation. This past Sunday, I got a chance to test out cricket. I don't know if anyone's ever played cricket before. You know, a lot of people aren't even aware that Niagara has a cricket academy, and they had a visiting team from Brampton. They played down at John Allen Park, and they got the cricket field. They presented me with a cricket bat, and I got to try it. So, you know, they pitch, and they throw up to one hundred and forty-five kilometers an hour, and I guess it bounces before it hits, so it can spin and dance, and it was really interesting. So you'll be happy to know, I was able to crank a couple of them out there. Now, he did throw them a little slower than he normally does, but that's okay. That's not really that matters. It was the idea. But it was actually a lot of fun. And cricket, a lot of people don't realize, it's a huge sport around the world, India, Pakistan, UK, Australia, around the world, it's huge. And it's actually a lot of fun. So if you ever want to take it in, all you got to do is head down some Sunday afternoon to John Allen Park in the back area through the natural woodlot area, and that's where they've got the cricket field and a couple of ball dyming. So that was pretty neat. Club Italia this past Saturday night had their opening event for Our Turn to Pray Week, which leads into tomorrow morning. And I'm hoping, if anyone here in council, anyone at home, if you're up early tomorrow morning, at Club Italia, the doors open at six fifteen AM for breakfast, and at seven AM, we're going to have Michael Corran as the guest speaker. It looks like it's going to be a record turnout. We've already pre-sold five hundred tickets, plus whoever shows up to the door. It's going to be a zoo tomorrow morning. Michael Corran has got his own TV show. He's had several shows. He's on Sun TV right now. He's had his own radio show. He's written several books. He's the guest speaker. He's known, bless you, he's known to be outspoken. You will not fall asleep when he speaks. He's a little bit edgy, a lot like our clerk. So I think we'll enjoy him presenting tomorrow's Mayor Prayer Breakfast. It's the thirty-ninth annual. The Niagara Falls Lions Club Car Rally is going to take place this Saturday on Drummond Road at the Niagara Falls Lions Club. This Saturday, CBC Hockey Night in Canada Play On takes place on the corner of Clifton Hill and Victoria Avenue. I think everyone's going to want to get down there and experience this firsthand as they're playing hockey right out on the street. It's going to be a pretty neat weekend.
It'll be on Hockey Night in Canada.
And it's going to be played on Hockey Night in Canada, so it's going to get national TV coverage right here in Niagara Falls. So get down to Clifton Hill and Victoria Avenue and check it out.
Do you have a ten-minute limit?
What's that?
Do you have a ten-minute limit?
Ten-minute limit? No, I don't.
I forgot to mention that Counselor Carrier was in Vegas with Prince Harry.
Oh, is that true? Counselor Carrier, did you want to share with us your story about being in Las Vegas with Prince Harry?
Harry, Harry, Las Vegas.
Oh, that's great. Okay, see, I lost my spot. Queen Street, right next, directly adjacent to City Hall on the east side, we're going to be opening up our new park, and that's going to take place at six PM on Wednesday, next Wednesday, October the third. Also, Steve Ludzik is going to be having his NHL Players Roast at Club Italia on Friday, October the fifth. And Club Italia, and by the way, council, we're still waiting to hear from you to find out. We have a motion wanting to know who all is going to be there. Okay? So all you got to do is just call into our office and let Kathy know. We've already got seats reserved. We just need to know who's going. And again, that's going to be, and if you haven't been there, you want to take it in. This is a roast. This is like a Don Rickles roast. You'll hear things that you won't hear anywhere else but a locker room. So definitely get there, get up close, and be prepared to be shocked. It's very exciting. United Way Elimination Dinner Draw takes place at Club Italia Thursday, October the eleventh. Opening of the Lyns Farm Theatre Project at the Seneca Theatre takes place Friday, October the twelfth. Their first play is going to be called The Woman in Black. Supposed to be a real exciting mystery, and you can take that in at the Seneca Theatre. And the last thing I do want to share with everyone, the inaugural Mary Di Addati's Who's Your Caddy charity mini golf tournament is going to take place at Dino Adventure Golf on Clifton Hill beside Boston Pizza, and for fifty dollars per player, and it's twosomes that we're asking, there's only going to be seventy-two twosomes, for fifty dollars, you're going to get your dinner at Boston Pizza, you get one beverage, you get a Skywheel pass. There's going to be a lot of prizes and games and sponsored holes. It's going to be a lot of fun. We've already got it a third sold out, so if you're interested, it's only the first seventy-two twosome. So please contact the mayor's office, and we happen to get you some tickets. And that ends the mayor's remarks. Yes, Counselor Maves? That is going to be, thank you for asking, Tuesday, October the sixteenth, from five until seven PM. Yes, Counselor Maves?
Your Worship, I just wanted to mention that last week, Counselor Morocco and I attended the Chamber of Commerce Golf Tournament, which you mentioned, and the charity was Heartland Forest Reaping the Benefits. And I'm happy to report that Counselor Morocco won the fifty-fifty draw, and I'm happier to report she donated it back to Heartland Forest, so...
Awesome, thank you, Counselor. All right, thank you very much. That was very nice, Counselor, and thank you for that, Counselor Maves. Okay, moving on to communications and comments of the city clerk. First item up, Fire Prevention Week request from October seventh to the thirteenth, be proclaimed Fire Prevention Week. Moved by Counselor Carrier, seconded by Counselor Peter Angelo. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Item two, CUPE Ontario requesting October twenty-fourth, be proclaimed Childcare Worker and Early Childhood Educator Appreciation Day. Moved by Counselor Gates, seconded by Counselor Morocco. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Item three, Niagara Falls Public Library requesting that October fourteenth to the twentieth be proclaimed as Ontario Public Library Week. Moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Carrier. All those in favor? Okay? Item four, Ontario Multi-Faith Council requesting October fourteenth to the twentieth be proclaimed as Spiritual and Religious Care Awareness Week. Moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Morocco. All those in favor? It's unanimous. And item five, last, Mr. Clerk, you've got a memo in there regarding COGCO availability for budget meetings. There's a recommendation in there for consideration of council. Is there any direction of counselor? Mr. Clerk, did you want to address this?
Yeah, at the last council meeting, there was proposed, it was proposed that we have meetings on off council nights, but there was also the direction from council that we ensure that there'd be COGCO availability. After discussion with COGCO, their preference was that we actually, on our existing schedule, we just moved back the meetings to an earlier start time. What we will do is, we will start on those dates, November thirteenth, twenty-seventh, and December eleventh. At five o'clock, we will dedicate the first portion of the meeting to budget. We will also, through our notification process on planning meetings, for example, if we do have a planning application, we would advise those individuals that it may not be heard till seven, seven-thirty, depending on the situation. We'll also, I think, on November twenty-seventh, ensure that we don't have any planning applications for that evening. So we're confident that we can accommodate that.
Okay, we've got a motion by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Carrier to move the recommendation. Is there any discussion to the motion? Okay, call the vote. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Good work, Mr. Clerk. Are there any additional items for council, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, Your Worship, there's actually four additional communications. I'll go through them basically individually. First is a request from the Niagara Falls International Marathon for provision of buses for their event. The ask talks about six buses, however, in discussion with Mr. Stewart today at Transit, because of our new articulating buses, there will only be the requirement for three. So the marathon is asking for this in-kind service that they've received in the past.
.........
Okay, counsel moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Peter Angelo. Any discussion of the motion? All those in favor? Thank you.
The other, the next one is, as you know, the region approves tourist exemptions related to different businesses in the community. Zares has made an application to be designated for some additional days. They already have approval on other statutory holidays. Council has been in agreement on all of these in the past, and I've... Council has been in agreement on all of these in the past, and I've already sent that letter to the region basically saying that, but just to get council's formal support of the application this evening.
Okay, moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, second by Counselor Thompson. Any discussion of the motion? All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous.
And then the final two are just a couple of proclamations, October for Autism Awareness Month and October for Lupus Awareness Month.
Okay, moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, second by Counselor Carey. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. Okay, the consent agenda, how did you wanna handle this, council?
Consent agenda, second.
Okay, moved by Counselor Carey, second by Counselor Peter Angelo to move the consent agenda. Any discussion of the motion? Okay, all those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. Bylaws, Mr. Clerk, are there any additional bylaws or amendments?
Just one slight amendment on bylaw 2012-93, which is the adoption of the amendment of OPA 99, very minor change under section 2.7.7.1. In the version that you have under A, it says at least 60% of the land area of the adjacent employment land shall be developed prior to the establishment of any live work use. That's actually supposed to be 50%, so it's more an administrative change.
Okay, thank you.
Just for the record, I oppose that.
Okay, noted as opposed?
Motion to the bylaws be given a first reading, your worship.
Thank you. Moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, second by Counselor Maves, that the bylaws be given a first reading. All those in favor?
Bylaws 2012-93 to 2012-99, read a first time?
Second and third.
Motion by Counselor Peter Angelo for a second and third reading of the bylaws, second by Counselor Gates. All those in favor?
Okay, bylaws 2012-93 to 2012-99, read a second and third time and passed.
Okay, any new business? Counselor Peter Angelo?
Thanks, your worship. I was just wondering either to yourself or through you to Mr. Holman, if there's an update on, on how the region is making out with the approval of extending Thorl Stone into the Gale Center.
Okay, we can tag team it, I will mention this, and then I'm sure Mr. Holman can add to it. And it's a good question, because it just came up today at Municipal Works this morning at the region, and there was a report that just came out from the Ministry of the Environment just today with a chronology of what's taking place. As you know, we did go down, we flew down this summer to SciTech in New Jersey with the region and with our geologists to deal with this head-on. We did put a proposal on the table that we are looking at, we're hoping that they're gonna be a part of, and the idea was rather than record of site control and just monitor the chemicals in the ground, the idea is just to scrape the earth, go down 15 feet and remove it, bring it fresh, take it off-site of the development area and have it treated on its own. And this way, we don't have to worry about people having to dress up in hazmat-type outfits to deal with anything whenever they're in the sewers or anything to that effect. So I can tell you this, the region is absolutely on, on this. I spoke, or through email, I spoke with Andy Panko yesterday on this, as well with Ken Brothers, Commissioner at the region, and today I spoke with Ken Brothers, and he's in regular contact with these people. So we absolutely want to move forward, very aggressive to get this done, we're very frustrated. Ultimately, right now, it does sit in SciTech's hands because they do own the land, but we're putting a lot of political pressure on them now as well. They made it clear to us that they answer to a board of directors of shareholders with people that have money invested. And, and you know, I'm sure they want their stock price to be healthy, and they don't want any negative public media around a site that they contaminated. So we're saying, do the right thing. You were given loans and grants from the province and the federal government to expand your plant in the city's southwest corner, do the right thing in the city's northeast corner, and clean it up so that we can redevelop it, because it's a black hole in the middle of our city right now, and it's frustrating. For anyone that wants to get there, you gotta drive all the way around our arena to get to the arena. Very frustrating. So that's what I know from my end, and I'm sure Mr. Holman might have some more valuable information than that.
No, no, I don't. Mr. Mayor, other than to say that we're following the lead from the region, Mr. Brothers has been in regular communication with me, and, and we're basically following their guideline.
And they did mention that too, Counselor, that he's been in regular touch with Jeff and his department, and they've already put the money aside for all the redevelopment. Our side, we're ready to go, and I've got a meeting coming up, I think it's next week, with the Minister of the Environment, the regional branch. And they're, they're very confident that we've got their attention, we've got a workable plan, and this can help us to open up that roadway, you know, once and for all, so that we can also fix that whole area, because it's a dangerous intersection, and it's a, it's a dog's breakfast, really. Counselor?
Thanks, your worship. And I guess just on that point, I mean, the ball isn't really in our court. We don't really control whether or not the project is going forward. There is a bunch of different phases to the project from what I understand. I mean, the extension of Thorl Stone Road into the Gale Center would be phase one, and then there's also phase two that's gonna go from the Gale Center apparently all the way down to Victoria Avenue. Aside from that, though, your worship, there's also improvements that are gonna be done on Stanley Avenue, if I'm not mistaken, south of Thorl Stone, almost all the way to Valleyway, and then I believe north of Thorl Stone as well.
Yes.
Out to...
We're told the Whirlpool Road.
Whirlpool Road? Okay. Your worship, I guess my question is, can't some of those improvements be done while we're in this sort of holding pattern? I mean, if you drive down Morrison Street right now in between Valleyway all the way to Palmer Park, it feels like you're in Europe, because it's like a cobblestone road. It would be nice, it would be nice, it would be nice to go forward with some of those other parts of the project that really aren't contingent upon that third party, which is SciTech. Your worship, I'd like to request that we, that we ask the region to actually go forward with other improvements that don't affect or aren't contingent on that third party, which is SciTech.
No, we were going for an effect, we're gonna call, you know, they have Old Montreal, we're gonna call that Old Niagara, and put the buskers down there, but...
It is.
It is, and you know what, I've had, I've had some contractors tell me, they specifically tell their drivers not to go down that road, because the parts shake off the trailer, and they have problems with their springs, so they tell them not to drive down Stanley. It's pretty sad, Ms. Counselor.
Yeah, your worship, I don't think it's too bad of a suggestion, because I would imagine that even all of the construction that does take place in regards to the extension of Thorl Stone Road, the outlet that the trucks, the construction trucks are more than likely gonna use is be going Stanley north out towards the 405. I don't think that they're gonna go Stanley south and then through the city, all of the construction trucks. So I don't understand why that portion of Stanley can't be done right now.
Maybe we'll ask our, our acting CAO if he could give us some input on that.
Mr. Mayor, that section of Thorl, or sorry, of Stanley Avenue, we need to replace a water main and do some sewer separation in there, so some additional engineering, which is already underway. And the Niagara Tunnel project is still using that section of Stanley Avenue to clean up some final deliveries to the ventilation shaft that's located in the hydro corridor. That should be wrapping up very soon, so we'll be looking at construction in 2013 for that section, hopefully over the winter. The other section north of Thorl Stone Road is just resurfacing, and I can follow up to find out the schedule for paving there. They had originally had a plan for the summer. We asked them to hold up while we're investigating that property on there, Swayze Drive for the transit facility, but it could be put back on the schedule again, and there's no reason why that couldn't be completed right away.
So did you wanna make that motion, Counselor? Okay, moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, second by Counselor Gates, to ask the region to move forward on parts of the roadway improvements. Any other discussion to the motion? All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. Any other new business? Counselor Gates?
Yeah, Mayor D. Daddie, I watched the media over the last little few weeks, and I noticed, I read the review and bullet media, and I, I read or saw an article on one of those that when you were in Ottawa at AMO with yourself and Counselor Morocco and Counselor Maves, that you met with the Health Minister, and you know, my understanding is that if they build a new hospital in Niagara, it was gonna be six years, and you were informed at Ottawa that it was gonna be 10 years. Maybe you can give us an update on that particular meeting, because obviously we got a lot of concerns on having the services that are now provided at, in Niagara Falls maybe moving to St. Catherine's, but six years was bad enough, but if it's 10 years, and maybe never, who knows, but maybe you can give us an update on that meeting, because I, I was surprised that I hadn't heard about it sooner.
Yeah, sure. And I did, we did update council at the last meeting. Counselor Morocco, Counselor Maves, Ken Todd, and myself, I think, and Regional Counselor Volpatti, I think, was with us too. And we went and met with the minister, as well as a number of other ministers. And yeah, she did indicate that it would be closer to 10 years before this would be built. Now, not started, but built. And, 'cause she, and I guess as Counselor Morocco pointed out, it's been almost nine years for the St. Catherine's one, so they started in '03. So you know, you can see the timeframe, and she also pointed out that it isn't just Minister of Health, Minister of Finance, Minister of Infrastructure, and she'd have to Minister of the Environment, she was a lot of ministries that have to participate. But she, she felt that, she made it real clear that we have to get our act together, because they want, they'll build this hospital if it's a solution to our healthcare problems. And the way she sees it, her motivation, and this was explained to me and to us by Dr. Kevin Smith, is that right now, they need about a billion dollars in repairs to these five hospitals. You know, Niagara Falls, Welland, Port Coleman, Fort Erie, Niagara, like, about a billion dollars. And they said, then you're gonna have a patchwork repair job, and you're gonna have to work and do surgeries through this, and you're still gonna have an old building with some new areas. They said, or you consolidate it at one site, and then you have all your money together, you build one brand-new system, but the latest equipment's gonna attract the latest, the best doctors and have the best healthcare. And, and so that was the whole idea. The mayors of Niagara South, we all met, we all agreed to two sites, either the Welland or Niagara Falls site. We all agreed that either one, even though we felt Niagara Falls was the best site by all the different stats we're getting, we agreed, either one. We let the experts decide. So Dr. Smith brought in mapping experts, he brought in a lot of different experts. They determined it was Niagara Falls, that's the place it has to be. So then, we went back to Dr., or to the minister and said, you know, it doesn't make any sense then, if you're gonna be building it here, why would you take maternal child out, move it to St. Catherine's, only to bring it back again? Why would you do that? Makes no sense. And she said, well, it's still gonna be 10 years, it's still a long time. We believe that this has gotta be part of the process moving forward, and, and that was her, that was her discussion with us. And we said, well, we, just for the record, we don't agree with it, we don't think it's a good decision. Obviously, we're not gonna be the one making that decision. But she never, ever gave us any indication this hospital couldn't happen. The only thing she did caution us was that if we're all gonna be divided on this, she said, it's gonna, healthcare will suffer, because health places in Niagara will shut down, and there won't be replacements in place to put, and then it was, we asked Dr. Smith too, well, how is it that other hospitals were, did not go forward? Why would we believe ours would? And his main rationale is, he says, because the minister has to make improvements to these five hospitals. She has no choice, she has to make them. So she can either spend a billion dollars there fixing up five old hospitals, and we'll still have those issues we've had, or she can invest in one. So she wanted to know, she asked us point-blank, will everybody unite at this hospital? Will every, will we, with that, and then Dr. Smith, instead of one urgent care center, is suggesting now two urgent care centers in addition to this hospital, and Wayne Fleet was just approved for a new community paramedic vehicle that'll be stationed permanently in Wayne Fleet, because they're so far outlying. So we feel that we've crossed all of the Ts, and we've dotted all of the Is, and we're in a very good place now going forward. However, having said that, she made it real clear that we can't be having infighting, and you know, there's been a little bit of that going on, you know, but hopefully we're good. And the one other issue I should point out, it was some had suggested that Niagara Falls is not part of Niagara South. That came up. So at the, the event with the Duchess of Wessex, you know, I rented it, Sherman Zavitt's official historian, and I asked him, and I said, you know, Sherman, how long has Niagara Falls been part of Welland County, which then became Niagara South? I go, how long? And he said, 1856. And he, not only did he tell me that, he sent me a whole long thing, which I forwarded to you guys. It's been a long time, more than 150 years it's been part.
You got another historian on the table.
Yeah, and the other historian, birthday boy, birthday, same age, yeah. It was around...
Does you have to be alive 73 years before you consider it a historian?
So, so anyway, he made it clear that we're not gonna change history and geography here. We've been part of Niagara South. All of the indicators that, and the criteria that were put together by Dr. Smith, we passed the smell test, there's one location. It's in Niagara Falls, that's the only place it's gonna go. So now, we just need to unite on this location. But still, the debate is, what's happening with maternal child? Why would you do that? And we, we expressed, we all expressed that, we thought that was a big mistake. So she heard us, didn't make any promises or commitments. At that point, she still didn't have her report, so she didn't have much more to say. So that basically encapsulates what happened. Counselor? Yes, Counselor Maves?
Your worship, I just wanna add also that, so anybody doesn't think we're the only people around the province that wants a hospital, the Health Minister had 15 appointments that day, we were one of 15, and they're all looking for hospitals, and they're all looking for money. So money and, and hospitals are, we have to get the money before we're gonna do anything. So I think that's the big factor right now.
Yeah, no question. Yes, Counselor Morocco?
And if I can just add to that, your worship, being in the hospital foundation for over nine years, it was a struggle to raise the $23 million for the new ER, and our goal, and our objective was to, our commitment, I should say, was $9.2 million. Only after, unfortunately, to learn that we had created such a modern ER site, although it might not have been perfect, the rest of the hospital couldn't keep up to the standards of the modernization of the new ER. So the lab and the way everything functioned couldn't keep up. So I think that they've realized now, the province has realized, that it's just important, you just can't keep putting money in these old infrastructures. You've gotta really step back and say, let's just build one good site or a couple good sites. The Centers of Excellence are proving to be well worthwhile, and, and we need it now. It was 57 years old, almost as old as, for some people around the table. I'm not saying me, but...
Fair enough, okay. Any other comments? Yes, Counselor Peter Angelo?
Your worship, just on the issue of time, I mean, how long did it take this St. Catherine's site from, from when it was first opened? And I mean, it's still not open yet, but how long did it take until it was opened?
Well, it's been, in '04, I think it was, and so it'll open next year, which will be '13, so nine years to open up their hospital.
Exactly, so it's not a very...
No, and there was a huge economic benefit in the meantime, all the construction workers and trades and everything else that happened, and you know, the interest in the property down that end, and area that no one was really interested, that interested in, St. Catherine's all of a sudden became golden. So there's, there's a lot of interest, and I'll tell you, it doesn't hurt, I mean, we've got the money and the, here's the other thing, our big pipe, we've got $15 million pipe down there, right, pipe and pumping station, that we always wondered what we would do with. And now, all of a sudden, we've got the infrastructure in the ground already, so we're way ahead of the game. We don't have to do that. So it's a big plus for us. So we're, we're in a, we're in a really good place. It's a real natural, it's fitting like a glove, really, you know? It makes a lot of sense. So we just need to make sure that we make the, you know, make the, known that we're all together on this, and that we want better healthcare.
My point, my point for raising it was, of all the services that we may lose, you know, six years is one thing, 10 years is another. And I think our position as a council should continue to be that we want those services left here, right in Niagara Falls, for the 10 years. If it takes 12 years, it takes 12 years. We just don't wanna lose those services. They're too valuable to our community. That was my issue.
Yeah, we agree, we agree with that. Okay, any other comments on that? Okay, next up, we've got Counselor Wing and Counselor Thompson.
Okay, I was going to speak up with Clayelle.
Okay, I was going to speak up with Clayles, first of all, just mentions, and you've mentioned the Duchess of Wessex a couple of times, that she flew in through the Niagara District Airport.
Oh, did she?
It's great that we had that brand-new facility just opened last year for her to come into the, the region through. What I wanted to mention was, you'll have on your desk a flyer for Creative Currents. Niagara Region is one of the cultural capitals of Canada this year, and there's been nights of art throughout the region. Ours is coming up this Saturday, it's in the Main and Ferry area. There's, it's, sounds like it's going to be a pretty exciting time, visual art, drumming, street theater, promises to be pretty edgy. So I just thought I'd remind everybody that this Saturday, September twenty-ninth, Main and Ferry is the place to be.
That's great, thank you, Counselor. Counsel Thompson?
Yeah, the other hot topic, of course, is the debate that's going on now at the region with respect to governance. And this council, in past years, have been actively involved in the debate and discussion on that. And I'm wondering if the clerk could send out the previous resolutions and reports with respect to that to the council, and we could have an update and debate on what the feeling of this community through the council is with respect to what's going to happen on, at the region, if anything. I hear discussions about the regional chair elected or appointed, the number of representation from the different municipalities, how they are elected, all kinds of discussions up there. And I think this council should have some input, because it will have a direct impact on us. So hopefully, we can set aside some time where we get those resolutions that we passed sometime over the past ten years, maybe more, and have a debate on this, so we can formulate some ideas on what we, we think should happen with the region. A lot of changes could take place there, and I don't think we should be caught off guard.
Okay, we got a motion by Counsel Thompson, seconded by Counsel Morocco, that the clerk do a bunch of work. I'm in favor. We'll call the vote, all those in favor? Okay, thank you. I should point out too, that we had an exercise on Thursday, business planning event at the region, and they brought in the same facilitator that we had, the city. Remember the dots, we had to put the dots on all different issues? Yes, and we did the exact same event, and it came down to two issues. And the irony was neither were of governance, or any of the issues anyone thought. So there was a motion put forward by Regional Counselor Selina Volpatti, that none of those issues even be talked about again for the next two years. But that was shut down, because people said, I want to have the right to talk about it. But I can tell you, they're not on the table in terms of debating. So I have a feeling there's not going to be too many changes at the region, it's going to be more of the same in that regard. So, but either way, we'll get the clerk to do a bunch of work. Is there any other, is there any other new business, Counsel Maves?
Ah, this isn't new business, Your Worship, but I'm, I'm concerned, our, our house is back onto mountain road, and, and a few years ago, they did, they did the road, and they put all brand-new sod in there two years ago, and now it's all weeds. It's, the weeds, yesterday, were about two feet high. And I'm just looking at the new place where they're doing the roundabout, and it looks like, looks like there's thousands of dollars' worth of sod going in there. And, and it's just a waste, now we can't use pesticides and all these things. I'm wondering if there's an alternative, maybe, maybe she should just plant seed and, and let it grow and let the weeds come up, because if we can't kill the grass, I mean, it's, it's just a waste of thousands and thousands of dollars. I wonder if there's some way we can talk to the region, or maybe even when we do things, we should look for an alternative to, to using sod, because very expensive, and it's gone to waste in two years, so I wonder if there's some other alternative we can do. Perhaps Mr. Holman would have some idea, or maybe we do different things now.
Yeah, well, we'll get the comment from Mr. Holman on that. And I know what you're saying, because all that sod went in the other end, I saw even in front of Orchard Park School, they put all sod last year. No one wanted it all summer, it's all weed now, there's no grass.
Even down Dorchester Road, that new piece they've just put in, and also the, all, the trucks were there with sod just from one end to the other, and it's just, as I say, wasted thousands and thousands of dollars, it's a shame.
So we'll ask Mr. Holman if you want to comment, do we have an alternative to sod?
Not, not really, Mr. Mayor, we are working on a boulevard maintenance bylaw that would require property owners that live adjacent to municipal roads look after that, that section in the boulevard. But we do have a number of sections in the city where we have reverse brunt lots, we have flankage lots that are on the other side of the fence, it's not convenient. We have cul-de-sacs that need to be cut on a regular basis, and we're in the process of bringing that all back to, hopefully in November, to talk about what impacts it might have on our operating budget for two thousand and thirteen. With respect to the roundabout, I'll investigate with the region what their plans are, what their standard is for cutting. I think they were there today, I thought I saw them cutting the grass on the north side of the road, in the older section of...
Yeah, they did, they did cut today, but I noticed a new sod going in, and I said, oh, no, not again, just...
Yeah, it doesn't look that great, I understand that. I'll follow up with the region and see if we can't get some solutions there.
Mr. Holman, I understand too, sometimes they, they'll spray seed down as well?
Well, they can use hydroseed to try and generate some, some seed growth through there. It usually survives in drier conditions, you don't have to give it as much maintenance. But because of the pesticide bans, we, we can't control the weeds as well, we have to keep the grass really short.
Thank you. Counsel Thompson and Wing, on this, on this issue? Was yours on this issue, Counsel? Okay, yeah, he was, Counsel Thompson?
Just following up from Counsel Maves, I, I think he was talking about, at the roundabout, they've got a big open area, which they've left, and they filled with soil. So obviously, they're going to be planting. Why they just didn't concrete that, there's no opportunity for watering out there if they have grass or any kind of plantings. I think the best idea would be to get some of those beet stones or rocks and just pile it up in there. That might be a safety problem also, but putting sod in there is ridiculous. It's going to be another ISO, same as we have on the four twenty.
Yeah. Counsel Wing?
Ah, yes, I recommend that this be referred to the Park in the City Committee, this is one of the areas that they have expertise in. I know that there is alternatives to turf, there's ground covers like IVs and periwinkle and things like that that work in some cases. There's also zariscaping, which is drought-resistant natural native materials that can be used and don't need to be watered. So I, I'd really encourage involving the PITC.
Okay, Counsel Maves, did you want to refer your request to the Park in the City Committee?
If they can do something about it, fine, sure.
Okay, moved by Counsel Maves, seconded by Counsel Wing. All those in favor? Okay, thank you. Any other new business? Periwinkle? Okay, good.